For a new hearing for Lowe's Home Center on Southbridge Street and Auburn. To consider it under a retail use. Larry, if you want to give your presentation for this project?
Thank you very much. For the record, my name's Lawrence Schroeder. I represent Lowe's Home Centers Incorporated, the applicant. We have people you've met before, but I'll introduce them again. This is Larry LaPere, who's the senior development manager for Lowe's. He's the Lowe's voice on this project. Mike Hall, who's from Tetra Tech Rizzo, is a traffic engineer. And I know you've met Ed Boito before, who is the -- was also from Tetra Tech. Both senior project managers. And Ed is handling the civil engineering, site plan presentation portion. Before they get started, and Ed's going to do the civil engineering and the environmental and all that first, but a few opening comments. We have three applications active. These are the applications that were submitted in July of 2006. Lowe's has one -- has provided one plan set showing the three parcels. Lowe's owns parcels one and two. It has an easement agreement with the Massachusetts Turnpike Authority governing parcel three. I have a copy of that easement agreement if you wish to have it. I can provide it for you.
Yes, please.
That easement agreement, let me -- if you --
Okay.
I'll finish with this and I'll give you that and the other items, okay? Provides that Lowe's will construct and maintain the improvements to the MTA lot as a cross-easement for access utilities and drainage. And the Lowe's patrons will have a right to park in this area in the evening and on Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, but the Mass Turnpike Authority has no reciprocal right to park on the Lowe's property. The single site plan set submitted to the board complies with the requirements of Section 9432 of the zoning bylaw, which is restated in the Board's rules and regulations for applications for special permits and site plan applications, which states in pertinent part that the site plan shall include that portion of any adjacent land owned or used by the applicant on which the use is similar to or connected with the use for which permission is sought. The uses on the MTA parcel and the bank parcel are connected to the Lowe's Home Improvement Center retail use. The MTA park and ride lot may be used again by Lowe's customers after 6:00 PM on weekdays and on weekends and holidays. Access to the MTA parcel, Mass Turnpike parcel, to what we call the bank parcel, which you're familiar with, and the Lowe's piece are all by a common driveway. A variance has been acquired, which grants permission to use that common driveway. There have been other variances granted relative to the driveway for width. Its location with respect to the bank parcel, the intrusion of the driveway into the setback area on the bank parcel as well. This is a list of the permits that we've acquired from the Zoning Board of Appeals. You have that already, but I'm going to reiterate it if I can. Special permit in the aquifer two zone for storage of ice control chemicals and fertilizers granted on 11/15/05. A special permit in aquifer three zone, storage of hazardous or toxic materials. A variance for aquifer zone two, storage of hazardous or toxic materials, all in the store. A special permit for building height. A special permit for the aquifer zone three, removal of earth materials within 10 feet of the historic high groundwater. A variance for aquifer zone two, removal of earth materials to within 10 feet of the historic high groundwater. Variance on signs. A special permit to render the property more than 15% impervious. Parking reduction, parking -- a variance for parking within 10 feet of the common property line showed shared by Lowe's and the Turnpike Authority. Then the variance for the common driveway, variance for the driveway width, for the location of the property line in the driveway and the driveway within the parking setback on the bank parcel.
All right. Are all of those approvals in the record?
The approvals through -- I have, when we had our hearing last, the answer is no, but I can provide them, balance of them now.
Okay.
And I'm prepared to do that. I brought them with me. The -- Why don't I do that while we're talking about it? This is a copy of the reciprocal grant of easement for the MTA.
That's one, a single copy?
It's a single copy.
Okay.
Then another one. I have copies, I'm sorry.
That's a paperclip, Warren.
There's a paperclip over there.
Yeah.
You have no idea.
I have another copy I can give you.
Great.
Okay. I have copies for each of the board members for the zoning permits, which were not in the original filing, which we talked about actually at the hearings back in 2007.
Can you make a copy for Mr. Harris?
And this is --
Doesn't have to be right now.
This is for everybody?
There might be one for each.
Is there an extra there though?
That's a copy of those.
Okay, so Ray's got one.
I've got one, please.
Do I get one for the record?
I can get you another one.
Okay. Even if you drop it off tomorrow, that's fine?
Yep, no problem.
So these are, these are not all of the permits that you just ran off?
No, there's a, in the full, in the binder
Yes.
Here, have all of the variances that were granted, variances and special permits which were granted originally in November of '05. What you have there are variances that were granted in '06. The variance for the common driveway, 9/21/06. And the variances for driveway width, location of property line, and driveway within parking setback on 12/22/06. All were acquired after submission of this. And all were acquired after discussions with the board and their expression that we go and acquire those permits before we proceed.
Ray, as far as the process, do we need them to file a new application or is the old application still covered?
I think the old application is, we're, at some point I'm going to ask you to confirm that, that you were asking us to review the 2006 site plan as you originally submitted it.
Correct.
So I don't think they need to file a new application. Because of the passage of time, it may be necessary to ask them for additional copies and so.
They've already denied that, but.
Well, we'll talk about that.
Okay. All right. Okay, with that.
All right. The other, there are other permits that have been acquired. Let me just finish with the special permits and the variances. There were, there were four variances that were renewed in November 2006. The variance for aquifer zone two, storage of hazardous or toxic materials. The aquifer three zone, removal of earth materials to within 10 feet of the historic high groundwater. The signs. Did I hit all four? Those four were subject to a further ZBA hearing back in April of 2007, which the ZBA granted.
Are those here, Larry?
Yes, and those were subsequently appealed by some of the others.
Okay. So were those ever granted?
They were granted by the ZBA, correct.
Correct, but as far as the appeal goes, where does the appeal stand?
The appeal, there is, the appeal has been a preliminary agreement reached on resolution of that, and it's pending.
But technically, you don't have those because they're under appeal?
History of, we've done.
Yeah, no, I understand. Just so I know, today, for us to make a decision.
Those have been under, those have been under appeal.
Right.
And appeal is not fully resolved, although there has been a tentative agreement reached.
Right, but as of today?
As of today.
As of today, there are, those variances are still pending.
Yeah.
Right. They don't have, they're not granted?
They're not yet granted.
Correct.
That's how I classified it, as pending.
Okay.
We've also, Lowe's has also acquired the Mass Environmental Policy Act, certificate of certification from the Secretary of Environmental Affairs. That's in your binder. They have the Mass Highway Department, Section 61 binding, that's in your binder. There is a conservation commission order of conditions. Was that submitted previously? No, you can do that. I have a copy of it.
Beeper document.
I'm sorry?
Beeper document.
No. Beepers in the binder. I don't know if the order of conditions.
What are the conditions?
I have a copy of it. I'll give it, I'll submit it. The certificate of the Secretary of Environmental Affairs on the final environmental impact report properly states that the final environmental impact report adequately and properly complies with the Mass Environmental Policy Act and with its implementing regulations. The finding under Mass General Law, Section, Chapter 30, Section 61, from the Mass Highway Department concludes that with implementation of the mitigation measures described above, all practicable means and measures will be taken to avoid or minimize adverse traffic and related impacts to the environment resulting from the Lowe's of Auburn project, and that appropriate conditions consistent with the finding will be included in the access and traffic signal permits issued by Mass Highway Department.
Okay. Certificate isn't in the record, but the EIR itself is not?
The environmental impact report, town, we have, we, it's not part of the traffic section, right?
The traffic impact study submitted to the planning board is the same study that was submitted to.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about the.
The environmental impact report itself?
Yeah, that was submitted to the town in the, during the process of that review, but it's not submitted as part of the site plan application.
Okay. Can you submit it?
We can provide a copy of that.
Okay. Please.
Okay. And then you do, I should do it now, it's the order of conditions. This is the order of conditions for the, in case, that's the conservation condition, order of conditions. Lowe's has also provided drainage report and a stormwater management plan. That's part of the application, which has been reviewed and deemed adequate by the town's peer review engineer, Graves Engineering. We have a copy of, you have copies, I believe, of.
Well, that was under the previous use, but now we're doing a retail use.
Nothing's changed on the site. This is the same building. It's the same drainage system. It's the same everything. Graves Engineering has submitted those reports. We have copies. If you, if you don't have them, we can provide you with new copies. It's not a problem. A letter report was issued by Graves in September 2005, and it's, this, that review was, as is typical when you've done, was done at the Zoning Board of Appeals level, at the, when reviewing the drainage and stormwater management system for compliance with regulations so that the 15% impervious special permit could be reviewed. That letter report was issued by Graves in September 14, 2005, and that states that the Lowe's plans address the comments raised by the peer review engineer, and they were satisfied that it was in good order. The spill prevention and contingency plan, a fire suppression plan, and a storage and display of hazardous and consumer materials were reviewed with the town's fire department, and Lowe's plans and commitments were deemed to be adequate by the fire chief. I have a copy of that letter as well. If you don't already, I think you may, but if you don't, I can provide copies. Lowe's has a, the fire chief asked that, in terms of the earth removal or earth material removal, that perchlorate free blasting agents only could be used during earth removal operations. Lowe's agreed to that condition. There was also in the letters from the fire department, which I believe you do have copies of, there was discussion about installation of an opticon system, which Lowe's has agreed to do as well. Lowe's also reviewed his plans with the Audland Water District, which discussed the adequacy of the water supply to meet Lowe's needs, the use of perchlorate free blasting agents, the storage of the icing agents, the display of hazardous materials, storage of, excuse me, spill prevention and cleanup, snow storage, recharge of roof drains, overland off-site flows, groundwater impacts, and the like. We have, we have minutes of the CBA meeting back in September of 2005, which I can provide a copy to you of, which indicates, which has testimony, summarizes testimony from the operations manager of the water, Audland Water District, that says that the, all the issues that the Audland Water District had were addressed, agreed to, and adjusted by Lowe's and its plans. And to the date of that hearing, all issues regarding runoff and groundwater had been addressed to the district's satisfaction. I'm going to have Ed.
Sorry, is that, is that in the record? Can you provide it?
I'm going to provide a copy of that. I can provide a copy of that. I'm going to ask Ed.
Do we have the police chief's request for an opticon system also?
I believe, I have the police chief's letter, which mentioned the opticon system as well. That letter was written directly to you folks, so you might, you probably.
Right, but I wasn't sure whether you had gotten it, because I don't think we got that file with it, but.
Yeah, I have that, yes. They, obviously, the two chiefs were on the same page with that. I'm going to ask Ed to get up and run through the, not run, but walk you through the site plan. You want to put the plans up on that display board right there. Should I get on the set? Is that better?
Sure.
Before, before Ed starts, I could just, because I've got these, and we may as well do it while it's current. This is the Graves letter that I referred to. These are the fire department letters. That's a copy of the Zoning Board of Appeals minutes, which relate to 614 Southbridge from that section there.
In the copy pile.
I owe the final environmental report. Yeah, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Glad to be back. For the record, my name is Edward Boito. I am a civil engineer, senior project manager with the firm of Tetra Tech Rizzo from Cleveland Ham, Massachusetts. Rizzo prepared the site plans and the technical documentation that was submitted to the planning board in support of Lowe's' site plan application. What I'd like to do now is to summarize the site improvements and mitigation measures, especially as they relate to the site plan requirements of the zoning bylaw. This plan, this graphic is an aerial photo that shows the site and the existing conditions on the site. The site encompasses approximately 17 acres. It's bounded on the south by the Mass Turnpike Onramp, Mass Turnpike Authority property, a butt, a butt's the Lowe's property along the western property line. You can see here the toll booths and the Mass Turnpike eastbound on-ramp dislocation. There are eight abutting residential properties along the north and northeast of the property, along the Lead Drive and Linda Avenue. There's a retail establishment in the southeast, off the southeast property corner, which is the Sun and Sound. And the site has approximately 300 feet of frontage on Southbridge Street, which is Route 12. There's an existing single point of access to the site, its service. The Best Western Motel, which was formerly the Yankee Drummer Inn, which is now closed. That facility had approximately 161 rooms, a function facility, and approximately 420 parking spaces. There's a small commercial facility located in the southeast corner of the site, approximately 6,600 square feet, which is currently, houses a branch bank. And that is proposed to stay as part of the proposed Lowe's site plan with improved and This is an existing condition survey of the property, which shows the zoning districts on the site. The site is predominantly in a highway business district, which permits a retail use with a site plan approval. There's a strip along the northern and eastern edge, which is a residence A zone. And since the access to the site is, is in a highway business zone, that zone governs the use of the entire lot in accordance with the zoning bylaw. However, I should add that no building or parking is proposed within the residential A district. The entire site is located within an aquifer and watershed protection overlay district. The eastern half of the site, which is divided by this blue line, is in a zone two recharge area, which primarily includes the, the existing motel and its associated parking. The western half of the site is located in a zone three recharge area. Lowe's received a number of special permits and variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals related to certain aspects of the project being located in an aquifer protection district. And Larry listed all of them, but I just wanted to point out, reiterate several, which include the amount of impervious cover this being proposed, earth excavation within 10 feet of the water table, and the storage of certain retail products which are deemed to be hazardous materials under the bylaw. What Lowe's is proposing is 168,000 square foot home improvement center. The main building, enclosed building, is 136,000 square feet, and it will have a 32,000 square foot attached garden center. A special permit was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow a proposed maximum height of the building of 27 feet. A height of 25 feet is allowed as a matter of right in a highway business zoning district. 561 parking spaces are proposed for the store, including 15 handicap accessible spaces. In addition, there will be 37 new and reconfigured spaces that will service the bank building, in which, and that bank building will be accessed through the, the new relocated driveway that would service the Lowe's property. There will be no direct access of that building from Route 12. Lowe's received a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals to reduce the number of parking spaces from what was required by zoning, which was 945 spaces, to the 561 spaces that is, that is proposed. Lowe's prepared a parking study, which you'll hear more a little bit later by our traffic planner, that showed that Lowe's store, stores need far fewer spaces than is required by zoning, and that documentation was provided as part of the site plan application. Based on an agreement with the Mass Turnpike Authority, Lowe's will also construct a 120 space park and ride lot that will be located between the Lowe's site, on Turnpike Authority property, between the Lowe's site and the Turnpike Onramp. Those spaces will be available to commuters during normal work hours, and they will be available for Lowe's customers at night, after 6 o'clock, and on weekends. Essentially, this lot is an extension of the Lowe's parking lot. And as Larry mentioned earlier, Lowe's received dimensional variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals to allow parking within 10 feet of a common property line between the Mass Turnpike Authority property and the Lowe's property that will afford complete access and circulation of that Turnpike Authority lot. With regard to utility servicing, both water and wastewater usage will be significantly less than the prior use on the site. Based on usage of other Lowe's stores, it's estimated that water usage will be approximately 1,500 gallons per day. The whole tap, whereas in comparison to the hotel, which used in excess of 20,000 gallons of water a day, and wastewater will be correspondingly less. Both services will be provided via connections to the municipal water and sewer system, which is available in Southbridge Street. This graphic shows the proposed grading and stormwater management system for the site. In behalf of Lowe's, Rizzo prepared a comprehensive stormwater management plan for the proposed development. And I would like to, and I would like you to compare what I will, what I will explain as the components of that system as compared to the existing motel site, which has no provisions whatsoever for the treatment, detention, or recharge of stormwater. The proposed stormwater management system for the Lowe's development will include a water quality treatment system that all runoff from all paved areas of parking lots and roadways will be treated. The system includes an underground infiltration system that will maximize stormwater recharge into the zone two aquifer to recharge the aquifer. And it also includes an underground detention system, which will maintain pre-development runoff rates leaving the site. And the result will be a significant improvement over existing conditions that exist on the site today. This stormwater management design was reviewed by Graves Engineering, who was a peer review consultant that was hired by the Zoning Board of Appeals, was also a peer review consultant for the planning board. And Graves Engineering concluded that all applicable local and state stormwater standards were met or exceeded. Lowe's also developed aquifer protection measures to minimize the potential for certain potentially harmful products that are being sold in the store from entering the drainage system that might possibly end up into the town's water supply aquifer. These measures were originally outlined in the Zoning Board of Appeals submission. They were incorporated as part of their zoning variances and special permits granted for the project, and they include both building design and operation and maintenance measures for the operation of the property in addition to its construction and building. These measures were reviewed in detail by the Audland Water District, and they concluded that the aquifer in the town wells will be adequately protected with the implementation of these measures. And those measures and conditions are included in our proposed as part of our site plan This graphic also shows the proposed grading plan for the site. And the site plan application also included additional documentation with regard to grades and required earthwork. It shows, this, this diagram shows the existing and finished grades on the site. The documentation provided the quantities of earth and rock removal that will be required in order to implement the site plan, including the quantities of material that are proposed to be processed and reused on the site, and the amount of material that will be required to be removed and hauled off the site as excess material. We believe that the proposed grading plan is necessary and appropriate for the development of the Lowe's store. It's designed using accepted engineering standards and practices, and upon completion will have stable slopes and grades. Lowe's engaged the geotechnical engineering firm, Alien Aldrich, to do a peer review of the proposed rock cuts and earth slopes associated with this site. And if you remember, Alien Aldrich was engaged by the Mass Turnpike Authority after the rock slide a number of years ago to evaluate that, that rock slope and to come up with a design for its fix, if you will. And their report was submitted to the planning board in support of our site plan application. And that report concluded that the soil and rock slopes can be constructed and maintained in a stable condition without undue risk to offsite properties. And they also concluded that the proposed design that is proposed as part of our site plan is most reasonable and appropriate. Rock blasting will be done in accordance with all local and state regulations. Lowe's submitted to the plant, to the planning board, uh, Lowe's submittal to the planning board included detailed information on blasting, including. detailed information on blasting, including our proposal to do pre and post blast surveys of adjacent properties, and also to implement restrictions on the use of certain blasting agents that was requested by the fire chief in the water district.
Excuse me, that Alien Aldrich report, is that in the record?
Also, the documentation submitted to this, as part of our site plan application includes such information on general earth removal and construction activities, including the control of erosion, dust, noise, visibility from adjacent properties. We also provided documentation on truck access and egress routes that will be used in order to haul off excess material. Put the site plan back up. With regard to lighting, the site plan documentation shows the location and types of all of the light fixtures that are proposed in the site and the resulting illumination levels. The lighting fixtures will have concealed source light, lighting in cutoff type design to minimize light spillage to adjacent properties. And I would point out that this is in contrast to the lighting fixtures that existed at the prior use on the site, the motel, which were included, which included pole-mounted spotlight type fixtures that broadcast light out in a horizontal direction. The planning board's review consultant, Antonio Franco and associates, who reviewed the lighting design on behalf of the planning board, concluded that, and I quote, "The proposed lighting layout, while providing good lighting at this facility, it does not impact any of the adjacent properties, as the expected light levels in these areas are either close to or zero." Lowe's has also undertaken a number of steps to mitigate impacts to abutting residential properties, including noise. A noise impact assessment of, was prepared for the site plan and building operations that was submitted as part of the site plan application. It was conducted by a consultant, Resource Systems Group, RSG, from Vermont, who are noise modeling and mitigation experts. First of all, to determine the compliance with local and state noise regulations and guidelines, and also to make recommendations for additional mitigation measures. That study included field measurements of background noise levels on the site and a modeling analysis to determine changes in these noise levels as a result of the Lowe's project. The study recommended certain mitigation measures. These measures included the installation of a proposed noise attenuation wall, which would extend approximately 350 feet along the northern portion of the site, to the north of the store, and approximately 450 feet along the eastern edge. So essentially, along the entire perimeter where Lowe's property abuts residential properties. That noise attenuation wall is 10 feet high. It's made of solid wood, approximately two and a half inches thick. Other measures that were recommended, mitigation measures that were recommended by the noise consultant, which are, which were adapted and proposed as part of our site plan application include noise dampening measures of all the mechanical equipment and facing the rooftop HVAC air intakes to the west away from the residences. The noise study concluded that with the noise attenuation wall in place, and the other measures that have been proposed as part of our site plan application, that there will be no greater noise level perceived at any abutting residential property line than under pre-development conditions from any Lowe's site operation or building systems. I also would like to note that the planning board also had a consultant, peer review consultant review the noise, our noise consultants study. They are modeling specialists, that's the name of the, name of the firm. And they basically agreed with these conclusions. And I would just like to quote from their peer review report. They said that, quote, "The modeling analysis was thorough and suitable for this application." They also said that the RSG study was conducted in a conservative fashion and carefully quantifying all potential noise impacts. And they concluded, quote again, "The Lowe's study has taken the high road in offering a facility that is well mitigated, minimizing the potential further impacts on the community." Lastly, the noise attenuation wall will provide, in addition to noise attenuation, will also provide a visual screen from the abutting residential properties. Additionally, Lowe's is proposing significant landscape planting, including a continuous row of evergreen trees along the entire residential property line, and an additional evergreen and deciduous trees and shrubs along the northern and eastern slopes to provide additional visual buffer. In all, approximately 300 trees are being proposed on the site plan, located between the Lowe's property and the adjacent residential properties to supplement the existing trees that will remain. The site, the site plan application also included site sections, which are shown here, that provided perspective views from the adjacent residential properties to the Lowe's store from the north, the northeast, and the eastern residential properties. And it shows the, with the wall and the proposed landscaping in place. So as an example, in this section, it shows, this is a section showing east-west direction. It shows the closest residential dwelling, their property line, the row of, the evergreen trees that are proposed, the noise attenuation wall, trees, existing trees that will remain, additional planting along the slope, and a, what the visual perspective would be from that residence to Lowe's store in scale. And what it shows is that Lowe's is proposing what will be a substantial permanent year-round visual screen of the development from the adjacent residential properties, and that will be along with full mitigation of any noise impacts. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions at this time, or I know that Mike Hall from our office is prepared to give a presentation on traffic-related issues, impacts, and mitigation.
We go there next.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, my name is Michael Hall, I'm the senior project manager at Tetra Tech Rizzo. We are responsible for the preparation of the traffic impact study that was submitted to the, both the zoning board, planning board, as well as to NEPA through the state permitting process for the project. What I'd like to do is go over our study methodology, some of our key findings, the proposed mitigation, describe mitigation to you. And also, there were a few points that were brought up in the peer review consultant's letter to the planning board on review of traffic that I want to hit upon and try and get an opportunity to, to point out some facts related to those comments. Based on the, the comments that Lowe's received on the environmental notification form filed the state back in 2004, the study area of, for the traffic impacts was developed that encompassed a total of 17 intersections and three highway ramp junctions. The intersections were located along Route 12. To get you oriented, here is the site. I know it's kind of hard to see, but here's Route 12. All the intersections are numbered. This is a graphic that is in our traffic impacts study. Looked at three intersections along Route 20. We looked at intersections north of the site along Oxford Street, and then also some of the ramp junctions at the Route 20, 395 interchange. We evaluated three peak hours for the study. We looked at the morning commuting peak, the afternoon commuting peak, and the Saturday midday peak, which is Lowe's, typically is Lowe's highest peak hour. Traffic counts were taken in the winter and spring of 2004, and we began the state permitting process. At that time, we recorded the daily traffic on Route 12 in front of the site, right where this number seven is, to be approximately 29,000 vehicles per day during the weekday, and approximately 28,000 vehicles per day on a Saturday. When we conducted the counts in 2004, the Best Western Motel was operational, and their volumes were included in our study. We then projected traffic five years into the future to analyze the future no-build case and the build case. The no-build case is the situation or the landscape in the area five years from now without the project, and then we add trips from the project and do a second analysis to understand what the implications or the impacts of the project would be. The five-year time horizon is consistent with state and local guidelines. When we were preparing or working on the future traffic projections, we contacted the Auburn planning department. At that time, they recommended that we include traffic from 11 other projects in this area that could influence traffic at these intersections. The traffic from those projects, on average, were increasing, would increase traffic along Route 12 by 1.6% per year.
Excuse me, do you have those projects listed?
They're listed in the traffic study. Some were in the permitting process, some were under construction. They were all projects that did not have traffic when we counted, but would be operational by the time the five-year time horizon would come about, when we started this project in 2004.
Have you done any traffic studies recently?
We have, and I was gonna, I was gonna get to that, actually. But we have those as a follow-up counts. In addition to the 1.6% per year from those 11 projects, specific projects, we also added another half a percent per year for regional growth, projects that we do not know about, projects that might be outside this immediate area of Auburn and north, north and west part of Oxford. So the total growth rate per year was, was actually 2.1% when you add the 1.6 and a half percent per year. Over a five-year period, that is 11% of total growth. When we began the study, there was historic mass highway data for Route 12 that indicated that Route 12 was growing from 1998 to 2004 at about 6% per year. So we felt, and still feel, that 2.1% per year is a fairly conservative analysis. The town's design consultant for the Route 12 project, which was VHB, in their functional design report for the Route 12 project, they used a 6% growth rate for Route 12. That constituted our no-build analysis. In, in, for the build traffic, we then took our traffic projections for the Lowe's project and added it to those volumes that were already grown up for five years. To estimate trips for the Lowe's project, we use the ITE trip generation manual. That is a standard reference source for our industry, where given different types of land uses and sizes, we can, we can make estimates based on actual counts taken throughout the country on what a particular project, in this case, obviously a home improvement supercenter, will generate on a per-square-foot basis. What we do know is that those rates from ITE, because it's older data, are fairly conservative in terms of home improvement stores. Lowe's has commissioned trip generation studies, and it was not done by us, it was done by another consultant, that indicated that their stores in New England area and the northeast generated at a lower rate than ITE rates. For example, the morning peak hour was about 28% lower at Lowe's specific stores. In the afternoon, about 25% lower, and the Saturday peak hour about 33% lower than ITE rates. For this study, we use the ITE rates.
Can I ask, now that's Lowe's average stores. What about Lowe's high-capacity stores or busiest stores?
Offhand, I don't.
Do we have the top 10% of Lowe's stores and what they've done?
We certainly could find out what the higher generating stores would be.
Could you do that, please?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Because I know, I, although I hear rumors about your counterpart, Home Depot, I, from what I understand, their Auburn store does quite a bit more than some of their other stores do, so I would assume if this store went in, it might do way a bit more.
Right, but it's important to remember that we're using ITE rates, which were not the Lowe's empirical data at all. We're using a much higher ITE.
No, no, but rather than an average store, I'm wondering what the top 10% stores would be, or something like that.
Yeah, we can, we could get that information.
Because there could be a lot of lower volume stores in that bringing down the average. That's all, that's what I'm concerned about.
In estimating trips for Lowe's store, any retail store, it's important to remember that not all of the trips are new trips. Some of the trips to this site, or any retail site, are what was called pass-by trips. Those are trips that are already on, in this case, Route 12. For example, if someone was going to the Auburn Mall, or Sears, for example, to look for a piece of hardware, tool, they would be going right past the store, they'd already be on Route 12. And for their trip to the store and their return trip. So a certain proportion of those trips that are already on Route 12 for other shopping purposes, or traveling back and forth between home and work, can pull into a retail use and then pull back out, and they're not new to the road. ITE gives us guidance as to what kinds of pass-by rates, what kind of percentage of the trips coming to and from the site might be already on the road, given particular use and the volume on the, on the street. And for this type of use, the ITE pass-by rates range anywhere from 44% to 54%, depending on the street, the store, and the peak hour. When I say that, I mean like an afternoon or a Saturday.
So you're saying those people, that are already driving down Southwood Street, approximately 44% on the well number, I just, just happen to be driving down the street and then they stop at Lowe's?
They, there's, there's data collected in other parts of the country for this kind of use that have that kind of percentage. We did not use that high percentage.
Because that just doesn't sound right at all.
We used a percent of 25%, which is pretty much the, the limit that the highway department or towns will, will allow. So it's still 75%, we're saying, and new trips, 25% are pass-by. The data collected indicates that it's more like 44% to 54%. We use a 25% pass-by rate. Again, we believe it, as resulting in a conservative analysis. Finally, if, if I can borrow your site plan. The Turnpike Authority park and ride lot portion of the parking field, what we assumed for our analysis is they will also be using the side drive, again, one drive in and out of Route 12 only. The trips associated with that are likely to be relocated from the existing park and ride lot facility that's further down Route 12, I think a mid-side drive if I have the road, the correct road. Those, that activity will be relocated here, and the traffic will shift from that part of Route 12 to this part of Route 12. What we did in our analysis, we assumed that that was still in place, and we just added this as new trip. So again, we're trying to build levels of conservatism, conservatism into our analysis.
On that diagram for a minute, while you got it up there. You come in the main entrance, you swing to the right to go to the bank and the karate facility.
That's right.
And then, but everyone else has to come up and then take a left, and then disperse down through the perpendicular aisles to get.
Right, the parking fields, right. There'll be no one back here, this is just for Lowe's trucks, so there's no conflict for people turning left in.
The first, the first left you'd take would bring you down into the mass park, park and ride.
That's right. Here, or you could come down to the third aisle, sorry, and come into the park and ride lot that way. I mean, you have choices, I guess, if you wanted to, because, you know, most of the people would be arriving in the morning, and Lowe's is not busy, you could come down to the front of the store, you could come to the parking field here. It's really up to the person. You know, I guess it'll depend where it fills. You know, there'll be a shelter here, as part of the park and ride lot, where the vans will come to pick up people. You know, my hunch would be it would fill from here this way, what it does fill in the morning. So all those numbers, what do they mean in terms of, you know, trips to and from the site? On the morning peak hour, and these are some approximate number, and these are new trips, not the pass-by, there will be about 150 trips. And in traffic engineering lingo, a trip is a one-way trip, either into the site or out. So if you come in, buy something, and leave, it's two trips. So if I say 150 trips in the morning peak hour, it's 75 cars, new cars through Route 12. In the PM peak hour, it's about 150 new cars, and on Saturday, about 390 new cars. With that information, we analyzed two cases for the future, the no-build without the project and the build with the project. So four total sets of analyses. One set of analyses, because we started this back in 2004, had no improvements on Route 12 that Mass Highway was doing. And then we did another whole set of analysis with the Route 12 improvements, which are now under construction. So that would be obviously a longer-term case. The highway department asked us to look at it both ways. Obviously, at this rate, the Route 12 improvements will be done before the store opens, so the analyses in the study, if you look at it, that are most valid are the ones with the Route 12 improvements in place. That no-build impil is the comparison. What I'd like to do is just take a moment and describe at the front door of the site, at the site drive in Oxford Street, the Mass Highway improvements that are now under construction. What's shown in gray is the existing, that won't be touched, and yellow is where work will be done by the highway department. Existing signal on Oxford Street will remain. The current four-lane cross-section will be widened to five lanes, so both in north and southbound directions on Route 12, north being this way, there'll be left-turn lanes and two-through lanes. New signal equipment and a separate left-turn phase, to which will help improve safety. At the site drive, there is no signal, the site drive is not being relocated. The road is being widened for this whole section to five lanes, so the left-turn lane, unsignalized into the site that has been there historically, will remain. A second through-lane will be added in both directions. The right-turn lane, in D cell lane, if you will, into the site, which is there today, will also remain. On the gas station opposite the Lowe's site, there is currently three curb cuts. As part of the highway department's access management plan, they're actually going to cut that down to two curb cuts. And that was a historic decision they had made, was before Lowe's came along and were planning to do that. So that will help cut down on the conflicts in this area. With the Lowe's mitigation, the side driveway, as you can see, gets shifted slightly to north to line up better with the gas station across the street. Gas station exit entrance, the southern one, yes, there'll be two, will be put under signal control. So those folks turning left out of there will have the benefit of turning left with the traffic light. Again, a left-turn lane into the site, exclusive left-turn lane, exclusive left-turn phase, and exclusive right-turn lane into the site. The two-through lanes maintained on Route 12, right in front of the site, site drive, a separate right-turn lane and a through-left lane coming out. Predominantly, it would be a left and a right. There'll be a few cars perhaps going back and forth, but mostly, this will be a left and a right-turn lane. Signal with Oxford Street and the site drive will be put under one controller, so it'll operate as one signal. The Lowe's project will add a second right-turn lane on Oxford Street. It's sort of off this map, but there's the off-ramp from 290 to Oxford Street, which has some queuing problems, and, you know, as you all know better than I, this is sort of a shortcut to get over to the turnpike. That's why there's such a high right-turn demand. As part of the mitigation, to help address the concerns with the ramp and the ability for people to get out and turn left onto Oxford Street, Lowe's will put a queue detection on the ramp. So there'll be a loop cut into the ramp. When the loop detects the presence of a car sitting on it, and Mass Highway has described where they, how far back on the ramp they want it, several hundred feet back, so it's nowhere near the 290 main line. When it detects that, the light down at Oxford Street will switch off and allow the Oxford Street right turns to go, and the left turns into it will be held back, so we can flush out that queue, make sure it doesn't get too far back onto the ramp, and help improve that whole situation. While that's going, the throughs will go at the site drive and throughs northbound will go. So people coming out of the ramp will not have conflicts, because these left turns will be held back. In addition to those improvements right at the front door, the park and ride lot, obviously, is part of the overall mitigation plan, ties into TDM for the site. Lowe's has agreed to do post-opening traffic monitoring along Route 12. This is a request of the highway department to, again, part was to see what the impacts of the project would be, and part was to check the trip generation that we talked about before. There'll be TDM measures at the site, including installation of bike racks, appointment of a TDM, Transportation Demand Management Coordinator on-site. They'll post information on ride-sharing, car pools, there's a transit bus that runs by. All that stuff will be posted, so if people, particularly employees who want to get there, they'll have, from alternative means rather than driving, they'll have that information available to them. That was also specified in Section 61 funding from Mass Highway Department. Mitigation that Lowe's has committed to that are on non-Mass Highway roads, town roads, includes conducting a signal warrant analysis up at Oxford Street and Bryn Mawr. And also, Lowe's has agreed to do some pavement marking and signage improvements at the intersection to help improve safety and operations. And Lowe's also agreed to do pre-opening and pre-construction, really, and post-opening traffic counts in the abutting residential neighborhood to ensure that there was no cut-through traffic. I mean, I think, I'm pretty confident there won't be any cut-through traffic, because you can't get there to the site through Linda Ave, or the neighborhood streets. But if the town wants and the neighborhood wants to do some monitoring, make sure people somehow aren't cutting through there, Lowe's has agreed to do that monitoring. So do it before, do it after, see if there's any change. So that's a summary of our study methodology and the mitigation. Some of the key findings, I'll start with the traffic and volume changes. I don't know if you all can see this. Each of these three bars represents one of the peak hours we evaluated, morning, afternoon, and Saturday. These three, that group of three represents volume changes on Route 12, south of the site drive, and this set of bars represents the changes on Route 12, north of Oxford Street, going up towards Church Street. The lightest blue represents the volume, vehicles per hour. Back in 2004, we did the counts. The medium shade of blue represents the no-build volumes, so that's the increases of the other 11 projects and regional growth and traffic. And finally, the dark blue shows the increases of traffic along Route 12 that would be associated with the Lowe's project, using the ITE rates and using the lower pass-by rates.
Now, these are all based on 2004 volumes of traffic?
Right, so this is 2004.
They're not based on 2008?
This is 2004, this is a 2009 projection.
Right. But have we done any...
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
In 2008, 2009?
We have some 2007 counts, I can describe to you. And I actually have some data I can hand out to the board if you...
But we haven't done anything in the fall of 2008 to come back to the board, or anything now? They're four-year-old counts or two-year-old counts?
Well, we did it in September of 2007, so they're 15-month-old counts, before construction started on Route 12. Right now, counting now with construction out there might not be a fair, you know, fair measure of what volume might be. But I'm happy to jump into and describe that now, or...
Yeah, if you could. Mike, why don't you explain why you had those counts done?
Sure.
What was the rationale, what was the reason why you undertook them?
Right. Actually, Larry, if you don't mind, in that, or Larry, one of the two Larys, in that yellow folder, I have the data, I can share with the board.
Okay.
Yeah. In September 2007, as you know, we went in front of the zoning board, appeals to, appealed denial of this board. In advance of that hearing, we conducted some traffic counts to see exactly what was happening on Route 12 since we did our counts originally back in 2004. And this is the raw data itself, and I can describe what it means to you. Kind of summarize it for you. It doesn't mean much by itself.
You could need one more over here.
They're coming this way. But, Mr. Chairman, if we could, before we jump into that, just one last thing on the key findings, if I may?
Yeah.
That's the traffic operations at the site drive in Oxford Street, because those are the key locations. And the build condition, so that's with the mitigation, with all the Lowe's traffic, five years into the future at that time. The morning, afternoon, and Saturday operations at the site drive will be either level service A or B on a scale of A to F. D is usually the threshold. If you get to E, it's reaching capacity. At the intersection of Oxford Street, again, with the improvements from Lowe's and the extra traffic, AM, PM, or Saturday operations will also be either A or B, depending on the peak hour, and it's all documented in our traffic impact study. As far as the rest of the Route 12 corridor, with Mass Highway's improvements and the Lowe's traffic, AM, PM, or Saturday peak hours will either be a level of service A, B, or C. And again, that's all documented in the study. So...
Well, I guess my reason for asking is, when this project first came in front of us, and this project now is in front of us, I know the improvement's not complete, but Salford Street traffic right now, at 5:00, is gridlocked, which I understand part of it's due to construction, but I honestly think there's more pass-through traffic going down Route 12 right now than there's ever been. Because it backs up from all through TJ Maxx Plaza, past CVS, all the way down past the turnpike, and almost to your project. So I'm concerned with the added traffic from your project, how it's all going to be affected in today's conditions.
Right, and that's fair. And that's fair. I think that, you know, by the time this project is open, the Route 12 project, improvement project, Mass Highway, will be done, and it'll basically be a four-lane section from Church Street to Route 20. And, you'll correct me, because I'll probably get the street name wrong, but the street down by Chuck's Steakhouse, is that Prospect Street? That'll actually have a fifth lane like Oxford Street and the site drive.
I guess what I'm wondering is, today's traffic, fall of 2008, spring of 2009, is it consistent with what you guys had projected?
Yes, we believe it.
Do you have numbers to say?
We do.
Okay.
The council I just passed out, redundant, September 2007. And what they show is that traffic from '04 to '07, three years, increased from 29,700 to 29,000, I'm sorry, increased from 29,100 to 29,700, 600 vehicle increase in that three-year period, weekday. The Saturday actually went down from 28 to 26,700. But the weekdays is a key time period for this corridor. That's 600...
Now, that's at what time of the day?
That's daily.
In the morning, in the afternoon?
That's the total for the day.
That's the total for the day.
What are the peak hours?
I'd have to look it up. Offhand, I don't remember.
Okay. Could you look it up in this sheet here, that you've given us? This is midnight, is that saying? Noon time? Oh, okay.
Are you looking at the first page, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yeah.
Right, so on the far-left column, it's 12:00 AM. It's broken down, you see that second column after the 15-minute increments? That's the volume every 15 minutes, and then the third column sums it, so that's an hour.
So it looks like peak volume is at 5:45 in the afternoon? Am I accurate in reading this?
Right.
15:71?
That's correct. And that's two-way.
And this is, this is what?
That's two-way. So that's northbound...
Okay. And this is when?
No, yeah, eastbound and westbound. They call it eastbound, westbound.
This is... What date?
Thursday.
What date, though?
September 13.
15 months ago.
Correct.
And what were you projecting for that hour, from your projections?
I'd have to go back to the traffic study.
Okay.
I can, if you want me to.
Go right ahead.
kind of right in front of it, was 2695, so almost 2,700.
2695, and where was this projection? This was at Salford Street, west of Oxford Street?
Right, right, so right in front of the site.
So you're saying technically you're double?
No, this count shows 1570.
Right.
And our projection, again...
Is 2695.
That's right. That was five years in the future when the study was done.
Now, what is this count here over in the far-right column, 2446?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure I got the right number here, so, because I don't want to give you a number with the project trips into it, because that would not be correct. No, I had the right number. The, you know, we went from 2004 to 2009, no build.
Whoa, 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 no, your 1571 is just for the westbound side. Then you have the eastbound side, and you're combined, I think the way I'm reading this, is 2446. Correct?
Yes.
So you're actually close. But that was 15 months ago. If things are busier than that, there could be more than that.
Could be.
Is there any way to get a new count out there now, 15 months later?
Well, we could. January is a lower month, so the numbers are going to come in lower, and it's construction, so I'm not sure that it's going to be beneficial.
Okay.
I think that, you know, the, I think the key thing is that, you know, the number we're projected is still higher.
Because now, what time of year? This is September.
That's right. That's a fairly, right, that's a fairly typical month.
Okay.
Excuse me just a second. I'm trying to write them down. So the projections...
The combined projection 15 months ago, or the actual, was 2446, and the projection he's saying is 2695.
So the actual...
So we're within 250 trips.
Yeah, 10% less.
Not quite, but, yeah, well, roughly, yeah.
10% less by actual count than the projection.
But that was 15 months ago also.
In that projection, 2009?
Which is it, 6% a year? I'm sorry?
0.6%.
Oh, 0.6%.
0.6%.
But that figure that you gave us from the traffic study was 2009, not the document you handed us, correct? That's the total, you know, around 2009.
The projection was for the year 2009.
Right.
You're not saying...
And this actual count is 15 months ago.
Right. I'm just trying to point out that... Right, I'm just trying to point out that we're already in 2009. 2007, we're materially getting there.
Right.
So it could be, as the chairman suggests, higher now.
Could be. You know, it's still 10% lower, you know, if it's growing 1%, 2% per year, it's still a couple of years' worth of growth before it reaches our projections.
All right. Anything else before we had more traffic questions as far as your presentation?
Just, if I may, just a couple of points that were brought up by the peer review consultant, just wanted to address a couple of them if I could.
Go right ahead.
One was this very issue. We think the projections are still valid, and therefore the mitigation's still valid, and the analysis is still valid. You know, peak hours growing perhaps slightly higher than the daily, but the daily's growing at a rate about 7%, 0.7%, which is comparable with the historic rate that Mass Highway's been using of 0.6%. You know, we projected a 2.1% growth between '04 and '07, so, you know, on a daily basis, it's only growing about a third as much as we had projected. The peer review consultant had noted that the safety data was old. And what I would like to point out is that, at the time we did the study, it was the most recent available by Mass Highway.
Which was four years ago, or four and a half years ago?
Correct. I think a critical thing to consider is that, even back then, that the intersection of Route 12 and Oxford Street was already above the statewide rate for safety, for accident rates, so...
Can we get this study updated now that we're back reviewing this project in 2009? Is that a valid request?
Yeah, we have to talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that...
When do we expect an answer on that? Just, we're under a timetable, so I guess I'm pushing you for an answer.
Can I talk to my client about it?
Sure, yeah.
Not right now, but we'll get back to you shortly.
I guess I'm wondering what shortly means, that's all. Tonight, this week?
Sure, sure.
Okay, that's all. Go ahead.
The intersection of Oxford and Route 12 is above the statewide rate then. It's not likely to have gone down, but the proposed mitigation...
But we don't know right with the new mitigation.
But the proposed mitigation, well, it's not in place yet, so...
Right.
Proposed mitigation, with the dedicated left-turn lane and phase, we believe will help markedly the safety issue that's there, because 50% of the angle, 50% of the accidents were angle accidents, and typically providing a left-turn lane and left-turn phase will help solve that problem. So, so we think that although we could update it, that the conclusions in terms of the mitigation being appropriate or not probably will not change. The peer review consultant had a comment on the appropriateness of factoring in the traffic from the Yankee Drummer Inn, and as I said earlier, that was open, so I think we put that to bed. I think we counted the traffic there, and we correctly adjusted our trip generation for the site, accounting for that traffic. Just trying to hit the high points if I could here. I talked already about the queue detector on the ramp and helping cars get out from the ramp onto Oxford Street. Peer review consultant had raised an issue that they have low E or F conditions there. We think that's going to help it, because it creates gaps in the traffic stream. The consultant also expressed concern or wanted to get some more information about the ability of buses to navigate through the site to get to the park-and-ride lot. As I said earlier, you know, based on our conversations with the Turnpike Authority, there's going to be van service, so the vans have no problem circulating through the site.
You did mention buses in your orientation right now, though. You mentioned buses going through there.
Well, if I didn't, I spoke, I meant vans.
What happens if they change to, is it in the contract that it's going to be strictly vans, or in the lease?
Even if they, even if buses did come, they could circulate through here, there's like a little corner here that we might need to adjust, if that's down the future, if they needed to.
Could you show a traffic pattern showing buses in and out of that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. If you would, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we can, we can get that to you.
We don't have a contract with anybody at this point in time, we're obviously...
You have one with the Turnpike, the lease agreement.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But we don't have a bus contract.
No, no, I'm saying if the Turnpike chose to use buses rather than vans, I don't, do you have it in your contract that they're specifically going to use vans and nothing else? I guess I'm wondering.
Because in Milbury, they do use buses, there is a city bus services in Milbury.
I can't imagine, Larry LePaire, senior site development manager, I can't imagine that the Turnpike would be the one providing the buses. My guess is it's going to be wherever the bus services are town, which would probably not be the Turnpike Authority, it would be a separate contract with them, or allowance with them. We have a lease with the Turnpike Authority to provide facilities.
Right.
And we have, you know, mutual use agreements for that, but...
But don't they have buses going back and forth to different pickup spots?
For the turnpike lots? The city, in, at Milbury, the city bus services, that's a regular stop.
That's what I would anticipate. That's a kind of service I would anticipate.
Okay. But it's still, you need a bus to be able to turn around and get in and out of there, and it's constant.
You also have Peter Payne doing that. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
No, I misunderstood Phil, that's...
Okay.
Well, could you show if WR TA swung in there?
Yeah, how's a bus going to turn around in there?
We could do an auto turns analysis on the plan and get to you.
All right. Any other questions before we start, any questions, any other part of your...
Also on that bus too, when it's exiting too, at the, at your top by the store, because that's the only exit out, you have to make sure that the turning radius there will...
That's right, yeah, we have.
If you could show that on plan, that's all.
Yeah, we would show the bus coming in and circulating through then leaving.
All right.
Peer review consultant had some concerns about Mass Highway's widening and the impact on the Pedali Pub parking lot. That plan will not steepen the side slope. The work will come up to about 15 feet within the face, to the face of the building, we're going to maintain the same slope, not going to lose any parking. Lowe's and the Highway Department have coordinated with Pedali Pub owners. And actually, there'll be an improvement, because right now, the driveway going across the sidewalk area does not meet ADA, and when it's done, it will be ADA compliant. Just two more comments, Mr. Chairman, I think I just want to respond to. One was the concerns about stacking here at the gas, the Shell Station exit on the signal. In the morning and afternoon peak hours, only one or two vehicles, we think that's not going to be a problem stacking. There might be up to five vehicles on the Saturday, I think, with some minor adjustments over here, and we do the, this is probably not the best one to show it on. Do the signal, the driveway realignment opposite the Shell Station driveway, we can, as part of that signal improvement, we'll make any kind of modifications to make sure that queue can be stored. And finally, the peer review consultant said there's going to be significant impact from the Lowe's project at Oxford and Bryn Mawr. We don't think that it's going to be, it'll be a minimal impact, not significant, it'll be a 1% increase in the morning, a 3%, a morning and afternoon, about 3% increase on a Saturday. Even though it's pretty minor impact, Lowe's has agreed to do the signal warrant analysis and upgrade the pavement marking signage to improve safety there. Believe that the peer review consultant was pushing to try and get Lowe's to commit to do a signal there, looking at the traffic volumes.
What is this, I'm sorry?
Oxford, Bryn Mawr.
Okay.
Based on the peak hour volumes, we don't think it's going to meet a warrant, so I think that the town might be better served to try and get some mitigation out of this that actually does something rather than just do a study and say we don't meet warrants. So we think the signage improvements and pavement markings will help.
Meaning Lowe's would rather do mitigation somewhere else?
No.
Oh.
Well, that's... As opposed to doing nothing there, I guess.
Yeah, you're talking about signal analysis there, what does that involve?
That involves putting the traffic counting machines like this out on all three approaches, well, actually, there's four approaches, the street goes off to the, there's a sort of offset intersection. And putting machines out there, let them run for a couple of days, and see if the volumes are high enough both on Oxford and Bryn Mawr to meet thresholds, that there's sort of national standards on the minimum requirements in terms of volumes that you need to have in order to just to install a traffic light. So, these were, you know, established, you know, years ago, so traffic lights wouldn't be installed in the country willy-nilly. So the minimum thresholds in terms of traffic volumes, they also look at safety, pedestrian crossings, things like that. So you leave it up, leave the machines out there for a couple of days, get the data back, take a look at it, see if it met the minimum volume thresholds.
As far as the timeframe, when would you do that? I mean, a year after a store is built, or...
That would be, you know, that would be fine, I think that's something that could be worked out, and other Lowe's projects that I've worked on, it's often, you know, six to nine months after a store is open, or 12 months, I think I would recommend doing it in May, that's when Lowe's is busiest, so that means the most sense, even though the impact would be... Any of this monitoring, I would say, is the May, the May after it opens, if it's a reasonable period of time, would be the time to do it. So, that concludes my portion of the presentation.
Can we have just a couple of minutes to talk to Mike, because we want to be cooperative here.
Well, we actually have some traffic-related questions that might help you with your decision.
We also owe your decision on the previous question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mike, could you put up the two scenarios for Selkridge Street traffic?
The mitigation scenarios, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. I guess my question and concern, the left-turn lane going from Selkridge Street towards...
I'm not sure that both can fit up here at the same time.
Well, that's, all right.
I can hold it.
Well, why don't you put your final mitigation up, that's fine. The left-turn lane going onto Oxford Street from Selkridge Street, right there, how many vehicles can be stacked in that lane?
I believe it's about 220 feet, so about...
Five or six, six, seven?
Nah, eight or nine, because people are going to end up going back onto the paint a little bit.
And peak hour, what is that turn right now?
I haven't committed that to memory, but I can look it up.
That's fine, yeah.
The morning's only about 90.
Yeah.
Afternoon is 295.
295, per hour?
Right.
So that, at eight or nine, that left-turn lane has to clean out six, seven times an hour?
Yeah, and the cycle lines will probably be about...
No, it's more than that, it's, well, yeah, actually, four, five, five, no, four times an hour, roughly. You have to get all eight of those cars through in that peak hour?
All right, well, the way this, the way this would work, because it'll be under one control, is that traffic will be released over here from this intersection.
Right, but I'm talking people that want to go Oxford Street, not to Lowe's, but to Oxford Street.
Right.
The only people that are going to make each move are the people in that stacking lane.
And the people who are coming after this turns green, if this is green first, and they're pushed out, okay?
I would assume both of these lights are going to go left at the same time, though? No?
I think that they could, and when they do, the throughs are going this way. So the throughs can follow, the throughs who want to go to Oxford Street will be in this lane here, and will just fall in behind and go.
I would think it would be more efficient to have a raised island straight through the intersection and have the traffic turn, whether they go to Oxford Street, or they do a U-turn and go into Lowe's. I would think it'd be a more efficient move.
Where were you saying?
Well, right now, I would think if you extended this line straight back, right across the intersection, so we had a divided side, the traffic could all come down, so you could have a traffic lane all the way back to the left-turn lane with a lot more tracking, a lot more stacking ability, and whether they go to Oxford Street, or they turn in and come to Lowe's.
Everyone have to, everyone who goes up to make a turn...
So you just have one intersection?
Right. You know, that's concentrating all the left turns at one location, which means that'll have to be longer for it to work, where you can split the volumes and keep both community phases shorter. We've done a lot of analysis, believe me, the Mass Highway Department has looked at this a lot of times.
Is that analysis in that study?
Yes.
The two versus all in one?
No, just the two.
Could you do that analysis?
No, no.
No?
No.
All right, well, I guess our consultants can do that analysis.
The report, the traffic report has been, in the information in the traffic report, has been reviewed by Mass Highway, and they've issued their Section 61 finding.
I understand, but it hasn't been reviewed thoroughly by this board.
Well, I'm asking the board to acknowledge that the Mass Highway Department has determined that these improvements that are proposed are off-site, if implemented, will make the traffic, or read it right from their letter, from the finding, that the implementation of the mitigation measures, all practical means and measures will be taken to avoid or minimize adverse traffic and related impacts to the environment resulting from the Lowe's Auburn project.
I think there's also lots of lost efficiency, if I'm not dwelling on something, I honestly don't think it's a very good idea, because you're concentrating on the left turns, but one of the key things to make this and a lot of busy intersections work is, when you're running the left turns here, you can run the overlap with the right turns coming out. If you had U-turns allowed, you couldn't do that. The U-turns for trucks would be huge, would be a big property impact here, which Lowe's does not control, it's a simple, you know, trucks coming in off the Turnpike, which is right next door, which is likely where they're going to come from, it's easier for their trucks to turn in.
But you also have two intersections several hundred feet apart, which isn't a good situation either.
But we can make it work, we're confident that we can make it work, and the Highway Department has reviewed this district and Boston, and...
But I don't, I know we haven't kicked it back and forth with our consultant.
That's fine, that's fine. I mean, there was, to my recollection, Mr. Chairman, and I don't think that the previous peer review consultant brought that up as an issue, brought other things up as issues, but not, not whether these work.
But we didn't really go through traffic that extensively under the first site review.
Well, there was a fairly lengthy letter that they wrote, it was nine, 10 pages.
No, I understand that, but time in front of the board wasn't that great.
Right, but I just remind the board that, you know, both of these intersections, all three peak hours we've evaluated will be either A or B level of service, so...
Eddie?
Yeah, well, you still have that up there, now, let's go back to that off-ramp on 290 protection.
Yeah.
Okay, now, you say when that's activated, the lefts coming down Oxford Street, the rights coming down Oxford Street would be able to go, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the lefts coming into your site will be stopped, so will all traffic be stopped, now that these two lights are synchronized, you're saying?
Right, so the left turns wouldn't go, those left turns wouldn't go, these right turns will go, and the throughs will go, so that way, these right turns don't back up and block, so they can flush this out, and the throughs this way will be allowed to go.
How many vehicles are you going to be stacking in before you turn into your Lowe's property there, in that left-hand lane?
In here?
Yes, yeah.
That...
That has a much greater capacity.
It has a longer length, this plan shows what the 95% Q is, that's sort of the maximum Q, and let's see what the scale is. Metric, great. It's about 75 or 80 meters, so it's about 240 feet, so bear with me with my math.
What's 75 or 80 meters?
Length of this left turnpike.
Okay.
So it's about 240 feet.
But the other one was 240, and that one seems like it's twice the size.
This is about the same as this.
Yeah, you're going all the way to the tail, but the actual stacking, because you can't stack in, in this area here, your stacking is really from here to here.
Right. People come in here, the back end of the car will be...
So you're really on the paint. You're 25, maybe 30 meters. Do we have a scale to scale out to here? Maybe 35 meters, or what? 100 and... 105 feet? So you're probably realistically may, maybe five or six cars, not eight cars.
Yeah, within the pocket area itself.
Right.
So this stacking, to get back to your question, it's about 240 feet, so that's about 10 or 11 cars?
We also have initial people turning into Linda Ave, they're coming up Oxford Street, trying to take a left there with all that traffic backed up there.
Right, and that's one of the reasons why the Lowe's mitigation has two right turn lanes to kind of flush that traffic out more quickly rather than the one right turn lane. Trying to keep that queue as short as possible so people can't turn in behind them.
What was it you said they were going to do on the off-ramp for 290, run back up into the lane, you said they were going to do something?
They're going to put a detection on the ramp, so when a car set, you know, when cars should back up on, back up on the ramp, ramp was something like this, sir.
Yeah.
So somewhere back about here, there's going to be a detector like you see in a lot of intersections. And it detects a car actually sitting, not moving, passing over, but actually waiting, stopped. It will then switch off, it's tied into this light, and it'll switch off so, so the right turns will go.
So that they don't go back out onto 290?
That's correct, right. Because that's an issue, I believe, today sometimes, particularly in the summer.
Any other questions by the board before Mr. Mieres? I know Mr. Mieres has some questions.
I just have one. What are the lengths of those three lanes going down on Oxford Street? What's the width?
The width?
Yeah.
Probably 11 and 1/2 feet. It's a metric width, but it probably converts to 11 and 1/2, 11.6 feet. Typical lane is between 11 and 12 feet. You know, historically, things were 12. Today, most designs are 11. So.
Pretty tight. Oh, that's pretty typical.
That's all the cars, they're getting bigger. They're wider.
Bigger.
12 feet is wide enough to take a truck.
We have 11 and 1/2, so it already doesn't function now with two, so I'm just interested that we're going to have three now and this is going to miraculously work. When it doesn't work with two now, I just don't see it as being really a legitimate concept. It doesn't work now.
Actually, or don't worry, the, the right turn capacity.
You have a question, though. You have three lanes going left, uh, going right?
No, two.
What's the, is that just straight or a left?
They go straight into the...
Oh, okay, it looked like it was a...
Radius to me, that's all, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anything else before, right?
If you could put up the, the plan that shows up for parking.
I'm sorry, again?
The site plan that shows up for parking. Oh, Lowe's has tractor-trailer trucks delivering stuff to the store, correct?
Correct.
All right, can you show how those will enter in and exit the facility?
Sure. There's two loading drop-off delivery areas. And Larry, you know, if I just speak, because he's, he's...
I jump right in.
You, you know, correct me. But they'll, they'll come in from Route 12, because everyone has to come in from Route 12, up the side drive, and then proceed on this, as you can see, it's kind of a shaded area, for trucks only along, along the north side of the building. And if they're making a truck delivery to this location, this, this dashed circle line represents the turning radius of the, of a Lowe's truck turning well. So a truck can come in, drive in, turn around completely, and back up to the loading dock. If they're going to this delivery area, here, sorry, they'll come in along the back of the building, turn on this sort of, I guess, south-west corner, to this truck turning well, as you see highlighted in the dash line, spin around, I'm sorry, they'll back in, pardon me, they'll back in, counselor, make the delivery.
Okay.
Drop off, come back out, use this truck turn well to spin around, and come back out this way. So they're totally separate from the parking field and customers.
And how do they know which one to go to?
I, depends on what they're delivering.
If they go to the lumber area, if they go to the loading dock, they go to the loading dock area.
There are delivery guys who've come to our store every day.
Which one's the lumber area?
The left.
Okay.
Up here.
Okay. All right, and a certain portion of your customers are contractors and people buying a fair amount of stuff at a time, right? Okay?
Yeah, not my customers, but yes.
And when they, they show up with their trucks or vehicles, where do they go?
Well, I would, they can park anywhere, depending on the size of the truck. Let's say it's a, you know, typical commercial truck, carpenter's truck or...
Yeah.
They can park in the parking field, come in, purchase what they're going to purchase, they bring it out to this customer pickup area, and they can pull their truck around and, and put the materials they bought on the truck.
Yeah.
And then they have, you know, a number of ways they can go. You know, if it's just, if it's a, if it's a larger vehicle, they can't make this U-turn, they can turn it down one of these drive aisles, come back out this way. If it's a smaller, it's a smaller pickup truck or someone in a, in a station wagon, they can make a U-turn and come back out this way. They also could, I suppose, if they wanted to, although I don't think Lowe's would encourage it, but certainly a customer with a larger truck could come up and turn around in here.
We don't prohibit it, you're right. We don't.
Don't encourage it, don't prohibit it.
It's not, it's, it's not a prohibited move. They could do it.
But you do, you do prohibit...
Customers.
Customers from the rest of that area in the back.
We don't prohibit them, but they have no reason to be back there, and we find that they generally don't go back there.
That's our...
That's not to say that somebody wouldn't drive back there.
But you don't allow your trucks out here.
That's correct.
They have control, they're, they're on trucks.
Gotcha. That's all, that's all I have to ask you.
Okay.
The end of the present, is that the end of the presentation?
No, wait.
Okay, well, let's finish the presentation.
Okay.
We have, we refer Mike and Ed, and I ask you to take notice in your application binder of the, that portion of the application deals with compliance and performance standards that they've been addressed in part, probably almost whole by the presentations of Ed and Mike. But they, compliance with performance standards do appear in the application, Page 15, 19, and thereafter. And those specifically address each of the performance standards, Section 946 of the Bylaw. And I, I'm not going to read them all, but while you're catching to them, make sure you note that. The, if the board has no other questions, you asked some questions of Mike concerning things that could be done or couldn't be done, and I want to be very respectful and I want to be responsive to the board. So we need to talk to you just for a minute to see what can be done and what can't be done. We, we are operating on a short timetable here.
Right.
And some of what you asked may be able to be incorporated as conditions of approval or conditions that can be, or items that can be taken care of subsequent to your approval as a condition. Let me talk, let's talk to you first, and we'll come back in in a few minutes. If you need a medical...
Give him a five-minute recess.
All right. Second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Larry, do you know the last set of plans, the final set?
July 2006.
Yeah, okay.
Working through the right plans.
You should have, there should be plenty of them around because we've submitted, oh, but we've submitted 10 sets when the application went in in July. We submitted 10 sets when the earth removal application went in in the following January. So there should have been at least 20 sets, and I think there were, well, there are other sets that were given to the ZBA, which you would have got, supposedly got copies of, but it, it's at least 20, probably more than 20. I'm going to put Mike back up here. Just a second. Okay, so the question, we'll have the engineers address, we'll have Mike address the traffic issues that you asked the question.
Because even thinking about it, you know, you're giving us tonight some numbers that were given to the ZBA during an appeal, but this board hasn't seen numbers since 2004 numbers. And our consultant hasn't seen numbers since the 2004 numbers to review. So now we're looking at numbers that are four and a half to five years old. Well, so I would think it's only reasonable to look at current numbers since the project's gone on that long.
But, but I guess doing counts now, I don't think is advisable because it's January, which is typically a lower month, and it's construction, so I'm not sure of any validity of going to do that now.
I guess I'm wondering, and I don't have a consultant here to ask, is the best way out of this?
I'm sorry?
I guess I'm wondering, and I don't have a consultant here to ask, due to a funding issue, the best way out of this for the, for the town? Well, we...
I was just going to say, I just, just on one technical thing, like this goes back to the conversation we had a few minutes ago, that you look at the numbers in our projections, and we're still within the envelope of that projection. In fact, we're less, we're 10% less. So what I said then, and why I guess I want to repeat to Mr. Chairman, that the projections, the traffic analysis, the mitigation...
Well, you're 10% less a year and a half ago.
Are all based on the numbers in the study, which are higher than the numbers from 2007.
Mm-hmm.
So our feeling is that the analysis mitigation are still valid, and, and we still feel it's going to work.
So you're refusing, just for the record, you're refusing to update your numbers?
Well, let's not characterize it as that. We are here...
Well, it sounds like that.
We are, we are both here tonight as a result of an order from court.
Yes, we're here as a request from court to relook at this under a retail use or a Zalumbiad use. But as a result, I mean, we're here to do a process, and we're looking at material now that is four and a half to five years old.
And the court knew that when it said we had this very short timeframe?
Yes, but the court, well, I'll let Ray get into that, I guess.
Let's be real clear. What we're interested in here in the traffic study is what happens, what is the impact of this once it's all built sometime in the future? So the typical way of doing that is you do a five-year projection, and you look at the no build versus the build alternative five years from now. Okay? Now, the problem is that that was done in 2004 with a projection to 2009. But 2009 is not going to be a, there is not going to be a, a build scenario in place. So the traffic impacts...
So we're looking at realistically a build scenario for 2014 directly?
Well, ideally, that's what we would like to be able to compare, is what is 2014 no build to 2014 built. Ideally, that's what we'd like to do. What, what is available here is your analysis of, of a scenario, two scenarios, the no build scenario for 2009, which is based on a projection from five years ago, and a build scenario that can't possibly be implemented. So it puts us in a difficult situation to interpret it, and it's, of course, even more difficult since we don't have the advice of a, of a traffic consultant at this point.
A situation, and I say that this with respect, but we, this, this situation in the terms of the timetable, timetable is a consequence of a remand order from the Land Court.
I understand that.
To, to you. And the reason there's a remand is because you didn't consider the site plan appropriately back in 2006. You had...
Are you saying that we're now obligated to, to put blinders on and not, not ask the necessary questions because of something that happened in 2009?
Because I didn't get that from the decision, but maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
Well, it wasn't a request, it was a remand from the court. And you have an obligation to act by the 31st of January, if I remember correctly.
Assuming both parties are cooperating. But if we're not getting any cooperation, I can't imagine we need to.
Well, our opinion is, and we're going to repeat it again concerning the traffic, we'll have, Mike go through that, we'll have him repeat it for the record. Go ahead.
I think that the volume projections in the study are 10% higher than we're, the volumes from Mission.
For 2014?
No.
Right. There is no study for 2014.
Right, but the projections done for 2009 were so conservative, because we used a 2.1% growth rate rather than 0.6 or 0.7 per year, that we're still, you know, 15 months out from 2007, we're still, you know, 10% higher than the volumes are today, the projections. So if, if, if traffic is growing at 0.6, 0.7% a year on, on Route 12, and we've got 10% to go in '07, you know, we've got another seven or eight years before we hit those projections. So we really, although we called it 2009 in the study because we used such an aggressive growth rate, that we're really looking at something like 2014 or 2015, because the road is not as growing as fast as we had projected. And, and we also, all of this analysis is not predicated on Zalumbiad, it's predicated on a retail use. That's our ITE generation was on a home improvement superstore, which is a retail use. So it is analysis of a retail use, not a Zalumbiad.
And it was, and, and one other thing that we would like to reiterate as applicant is, was designed, all the design was done by traffic engineers, reviewed at the state level by traffic engineers with input from the traffic engineers who understand the traffic, reviewed by your own traffic consultants, they... Right, but the process isn't complete. We're not done our finding, so the process can't be complete. However, when the court gave both you and I essentially 45 days to review this...
Right.
And then have you add. My belief is, and you can take argument with this if you'd like, but implicit in that is, there's no chance for us to do any additional analysis. There's no time. It's certainly completely inappropriate under the current circumstances.
Certainly.
The court wanted you to review the data that we had submitted under the direction that it gave you. Now, do you consider us drawing up and doing the final analysis of this without consultants being reasonable? I think it's completely reasonable for you to review this in the framework that the court gave you and look at it, the application that we submitted, when we submitted it, under your regulations, when you submitted it, with the data you received from your consultants when they submitted. I think it's perfectly appropriate. Me not being a traffic engineer, I need someone to bounce things off of. But you have a traffic. We don't right now. You do. The data that we gave you is identical. Right, but I mean, to ask him about left turn lanes, to ask him about, he's not here. So I, I can't do that. But he did last night, and he submitted... No, we never asked him these questions. And this is still part of the process. That's my point. But you had your opportunity. We never... We don't have our opportunity. The site plan process is still continuing, and we don't have that opportunity. When you asked us to fund the review, which we did... Right, and part of that review is being here at the meetings for us to analyze that review with him. Were they at the meetings last night? Yes, but they're not at the meetings this time. I, I don't think so. I, I would say that the guy to take that up with is not me, it's the judge. No, and I think we will do that. All right. Any other?
Well, I've got some more questions. Is that the end of your presentation now?
I want to finish with the presentation, again, referring back to the performance standards in the, in the application. They have all been met under the application that was submitted, and we would respectfully request your approval of the site plan. Okay?
Okay. Just so that the record is complete, in the record, there should be a letter from Chairman David DeWales to you, Mr. Brodeur, dated 17th of December. Does that...
Yes, it is.
Make sure that that's in the record, and the response that was received from Mr. Brodeur on December, dated December 26.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So those two things need to be in the record. So I guess I have some questions for Mr. Brodeur. You made reference to the rules and regulations for applications for special permits and site plan approvals. Section 2 of those regulations in the first bullet point says, submit 10 copies of the application... application and plan to the town planner. Note, the planning board may request additional copies of the plan in some cases. See that?
I don't have those with me, but-
Do you have a copy?
No, I don't.
Is that, is that the only one?
Oh, there, there. It's all scribbled on the inside, but-
Well, this is the-
I have them.
You have them.
Yeah.
Okay.
What section were you referring to?
Section two, first bullet point. Submit 10 copies of the application and plan to the town planner. Note, the planning board may request additional copies of the plan in some cases.
Yep.
Okay. In the letter on the 17th of December, the planning board in fact made such a request, and your response is contained in your letter. Item number two, the board has the complete site plan application and should not need nor require additional copies of the application. You see that? Now, it may be that, that the planning board has turned up enough copies, I don't know, but that this is a request that was made, and I just need to confirm that you are not willing to comply with the request.
Well, I think this request, I think that provision applies to when the plans are initially submitted. If there's more needed at that point in time, they can ask and will submit.
Where does it, where are you getting that?
If the board needs more at this point in time, we'll provide it.
Okay.
I think we'd like complete sets of everything, I guess, because, you know, this project was denied two years ago, and-
The individual members of the board may not still have their own copies of everything.
Correct.
Can you work with Adam to make sure that there are enough copies for every, of everything?
How many copies do you want?
I'll have two.
Give us a number.
Why don't we, so we make sure that the town engineer has a complete set, we make sure each of our consultants have complete sets, each board member has a complete set, and not a bad set?
You asked for 10 in your letter, is that what you want?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Now, in your letter on, of December 26th, item three, you say, "A new landscape plan and narrative demonstrating compliance with the town's new landscape buffering and screening requirements is not required." See that?
Yes.
So are you taking the position that the May 2008 amendments to the zoning bylaw do not apply to the second?
Like, we are.
Okay. Can you provide the board with whatever legal argument you would like to make in support of that position?
Certainly.
Okay. Preferably in writing, and in advance of the next hearing, Dave?
Yes.
Can you do it that fast?
Oh, yeah. Yes, we can.
Okay. Now-
If you wish, I can refer you to the cases that are relevant right now, but-
No, I'd rather that you submit something.
Okay.
Okay?
There is a special permit freeze that applies here, and it extends to the site plan.
Okay. So if that's, if that's the case, would you support that position in writing?
Yes.
Okay. Now, assuming that what you say is correct, are you also taking the position that the planning board, or do you believe that the planning board has the authority to impose conditions that are consistent with the standards that are in that new bylaw?
Not, not necessarily, no. No.
Could you elaborate on what, what you mean by not necessarily?
No, the answer is no.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have a site plan.
Yes.
We have a site plan that's been submitted with a landscape plan. That is the landscape plan that should be reviewed. Our position is that the, that the regulations make it clear, that the regulations adopted in May of 2008 relating to landscape, landscape screening and buffering do not apply to this site plan.
Okay. What does, what standard are you saying does apply?
Any standards that existed at the time the site plan was submitted.
Okay, so are you, are you saying that we do or do not have the authority to impose conditions related to landscaping and buffering?
Of the 2008 bylaw?
No, no, just conditions.
To the extent that they were part of the code when we made application, say yes.
Okay, well, would you support that position in writing, please, in advance of the next hearing as well?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna limit it to my, my response is gonna be limited to the applicability of the 2008 bylaw.
So you will not support the, the other position, that we don't have the authority to impose landscape buffering?
At this point in time, I don't have any, I don't have a response to that.
Okay. All right. Now, if you go back to the rules and regulations, section nine having to do with review fees.
I'm sorry?
Section nine having to do with review fees.
Yes.
And paragraph C under section nine says, "When the review fee account is depleted, an additional deposit shall be made by the applicant." You see that?
Yes.
And you're-
No, I haven't, I haven't got the document. All right.
C?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and you're aware that in the December 17th letter, a request for additional funding in the amount of $17,500 in review fees was, was made?
Yes.
Okay. And in your response, you declined to provide that?
That's correct.
Okay. What do you understand to be the legal consequence of an applicant's failure to comply with a request made under that section?
Well, I'm not, our position is that the review fees that were provided in 2006, which totaled $31,200, which responded to the scope of services reviewing the 2006 plan, that the scope of services that was developed by, by the planning board asked Lowe's to fund, which we did. In addition, there was a $2,600 funding to Graves Engineering under the ZBA peer review request, which, which report the board received. The board scoped the services, the board got a, acquired a contractor, an estimate for the cost of services, the fee was paid, and all the review, all of the peer review on the 2006 application was completed.
Can you identify any place where any of those facts, any spot in these regulations where any of those facts are relevant? That is to say, does there, does the review fee regulation say that you're only required to, to provide additional funds if you decide they're necessary?
Well, Mr. Miaris, why don't you, I'd be happy to respond to all your questions. Why don't you place them in writing and we'll respond to them? I'm not giving testimonial response to your questions at this point. I, I'm respectfully requesting that if you have those questions, if you've given them to me in writing, I'd be happy to provide you with responses.
All right, well, the, in paragraph B, under the review fees, it specifically identifies the types of consultants that may be engaged and included in the list of the lawyers. Am I correct that you, in your response, in December 26th, that you declined to provide payment for the planning board's legal services?
I think the letter speaks for itself.
Okay. Well, just to be clear, are you, I don't know whether that speaks for itself or not. Are you suggesting that there is something that is, that you're not objecting to the retaining of legal services, but only you're objecting to the board's retaining legal services from our firm because we're involved in litigation?
I think the letter speaks for itself.
Well, I don't, so I wonder if you could answer the question.
Again, respectfully if you want, I'll provide written responses if you want.
Well, you know, we're, we're under quite a short deadline here, and I think it's a problem if you can't answer the question, or you won't answer the questions when they're asked, if you want them submitted in writing, you know, these just strike me as being delay tactics, which, which I think are problematic.
We'll answer them tomorrow, if you can, if we're sitting right, just so you know.
Well, it doesn't do us any good if you answer them tomorrow, or you answer them in a week, it's the same. You can't answer them for the board until next week. Okay?
Well, I think, Mr. Miaris, I think the letter is clear on its face, and it speaks for itself, and I think it addresses the questions you've asked.
Okay. All right. At this point, I would suggest that you continue the hearing until next time, but there may be others in the-
Public.
Public who want to comment, so why don't you give them a, to do so, and then we should continue.
Is there any public comment on this? Mr. Moss, any public comment? Any other board comment? And as of right now, just so we're clear, this, where did we leave the traffic? As far as, so we're not updating anything either.
In addition to everything else.
All right.
Okeydoke.
Is there a motion to continue till next Tuesday night, the 13th, at what time?
They are tentatively scheduled for 7:10.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Take this vote. We will see you next week.
Yep.
Happy New Year, all. Stacy, I'll give myself to the next.
No, you have it, did your card have it?
Yes.
I believe it's also on the letterhead.
The letterhead.
Oh, it's also on the letterhead? All right. Then in that case, I don't need it.
Guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
2008, January, I have to read again in 2009, I don't know if the special permit freeze can use, I wonder if it's less separate?
That would constitute, I don't know.
Okay. Guys, next one.
I don't know either. That's why I wanted to-
But, but a stormwater would be cute.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion amongst the board regarding our initial process of coming up with our decision for the open space, special permit for the open space.
Correct.
Auburn Hills. I don't know how you guys want to start, I'm thinking the most appropriate thing would probably be to go through the mitigation and just clarify what we feel the mitigation is, and then we, I think we have to put some kind of order in, in. I also talked to Bill Coyle today to try to get him involved in this, to look at the mitigation, although it's, I think it's generally agreed upon what the mitigation is going to be, if he, since he wasn't here during most of this process, if he's on board with everything, and to get his opinion as far as a, a lineage of what should be done first, and with what phases, and that type of thing. So he, he actually sounded very interested in working with us on that, to try to help us out with that. And if it's all right with you, I'm gonna probably try to get together with him some afternoon next week, and maybe take a ride, and look at everything. I know his, one of his concerns, like, with even the sewer work, that rather than just patching, he was almost wondering whether we could, once they complete the phase, whether they pulverize and binder it, but just don't top it, so that they could, if they was settled and take a level of trenches and do it, but rather than dealing with the patch till the, whatever phase is done, you know, something like that, just to, something to think about. I started going through, let me try to find my notes here. Yeah, here, here we go. Which I guess this is, I believe the applicant had given us their draft decision.
This is actually from our, our legal counsel.
This is too?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything that the board has is from our, our legal counsel, and-
Because I was going through the memorandum of understanding between the planning board and Brendan Properties from our legal counsel, and there was, there were quite a few things that I felt weren't accurate, or completely accurate. I don't know if, does everybody have, I was going through this memorandum.
I don't have it with me. I don't have it with me.
You guys need copies?
Oh, oh, no? Oh.
I think that was my-
Oh, actually, I think I have a second copy here, I might have.
Dave, you want, hold, hit one?
Yeah, I need one.
Please.
Okay. I just wanted to at least run down through, because there's some things that aren't clear, and they, they weren't according to my memory, and I just wanted to kind of bounce it off everybody. But we'll wait till that gets copied. How you doing, guys? You having a good New Year so far?
I saw Dan outside, and I said, "How was your summer?"
Yeah.
"How was your fall?"
Yeah.
"And how were your holidays?"
No, no.
And I told him, and I told him it was all your fault for the season as long.
I take 100%, but now we're on, we're full focus, and we're gonna get a-
We're just here to kind of help with this question, so you realize it's really your kind of meeting to discuss.
Was there aware, Bill Coyle and I were talking, and-
I know he was calling you on a few things.
Yes, if I could take a ride with him on, for each of the mitigation items, and we did.
Yeah, because we're gonna take a look at the intersection, because we still left it a little bit in the gray area, Rochdale Street, or whether, you guys said you didn't care whether it was Rochdale Street or Roxford and Pinehurst, that intersection, whichever, but I was curious what Bill's spin was on the light down there.
I mentioned the fact that he was concerned over the hill with cars stopping in the snowstorm, and I mentioned to him that we proposed that it was similar to what Spencer does on their downtown, is put the light on flash only for the few hours until it's ended, and that's, I mean, basically, that's what they do in Spencer, because they have no choice, it's a big hill to on downtown. And I had talked to the chief, and he thought that was appropriate.
Yeah, no, I, I talked to Chief Salukus also, and he seemed fine with it.
He really didn't express concern either way, you know, whether it should be at the top of the hill or not, so.
Just so, I don't know if Mr. Moss is familiar with our new engineer, he used to be, had a projects for Mass Highway.
Yeah, no, I, I-
So he's pretty familiar with-
I dealt with him somewhere like 10 years ago.
Yeah.
He doesn't know me, but I did that project.
Yeah, no, we, I, I have a great comfort level with him, we've seen him done a lot of things, and so we want to just bounce everything by him, and try to get his spin on how things should-
I've left it with kind of Lloyd, you know, we worked it out with him.
Yeah, all right.
I haven't really stayed that long.
All right, so we all have copies, huh? Okay. To go down through, the first item, because the first were really more- To go down through, the first item, because the first were really more, I think, housekeeping things or whatever, but, uh, first item as far as mitigation was the sewer line, public sewer installation in Rochdale Street, 2,500 feet between Old Rochdale Street and first sewer manhole, east of Leicester Street intersection, temporary patch of pavement, but this also will include a pulverizing repave of the roadway. And it will be as per plan, pulverize.
An as-built plan?
What's that?
As-built plan?
No, as per plan.
As per plan.
Is that covered in E, though? Is that...
Well, that's, we're gonna go through all of them, but, um...
I mean, because assumption, she's kind of staggered.
Yeah.
We didn't write it, you know, so, but, but I think E is supposed to cover what you're looking for.
Okay.
Even though the wording might not be to your satisfaction, I'll just...
I mean, the way we put it was that we would put sewer and patch it, and then a year later, when we're doing the next phase, come back and reclaim the road, so it had a chance to settle.
Yeah.
Bill had mentioned, maybe there should be a clause in there to say, "When you start the next phase, or within 12 months of the patching..."
No later than.
No later than.
All right, well, I mean, something we need to talk about the board for the next meeting, can, and look and think about, because we need to tie this down as best we can, not to say these guys aren't good guys, but just if the project sold, who knows what, that's all. We have to think about how we want to tie that down exactly. Realigning both Leicester Street and approaches to Rochdale Street, install flush island signage, striping for CS exit, or underpass, purchase land easements from four or butters for road improvements, at a cost not to exceed $60,000, which, is that, I don't think I ever heard what the dollar amount was, but I thought you had four agreements anyway.
It was four verbals.
Okay.
But, but I couldn't, you know, people don't want to execute unless they have their money, and I wasn't gonna go pay them, you know, as part of the approval process.
Yeah.
So those are the verbal agreements I have with these people, but what we didn't want to do is have it as a condition, that all four easements have to be given, because someone might say, "Well, now I want a million dollars," because you can't go forward with your plan.
But I guess as a condition, rather than putting in $60,000, we're automatically out, I think we'd rather put it in as a condition, and then the board would be willing to listen if some, if there's a problem. You follow?
Well, we need, we probably need some meat, come somewhere in the middle between the two.
All right, well...
Because, you know, it's not really...
No, I understand what you're saying, but if we put $60,000 in, and it's $61,000, technically, it's automatically out.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
But if it was 61, you wouldn't hear from us either.
But by agreement, we'd have to go by that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
During the hearing process, it was discussed that if we couldn't attain...
I don't think I ever heard a dollar amount.
I never did.
I kind of figured it was somewhere around that, but, because even I thought, I heard from you, you were talking about...
We had a 10, a 10, and a 20, and a 20.
Okay, all right.
And that's for like an easement on 250 square feet.
No, I understand that part, I understand that part, but, I mean, you know, we're more concerned with the, just the general easements, and I guess, we'd rather put it in as strong as we can, and...
But maybe some, some language, and maybe you or your attorney comes up with, that if the cost exceeds that, the board will, you know, re-retain the requirement.
Be willing to listen, yeah.
You know, something that allows, so it's not so finite with the, the four butters, you know, so they won't feel like they got us by the, you know, what.
No.
Yeah, I mean, if the cost became prohibited, we could, you know, reexamine it at that point.
Yeah, if the cost is substantially higher, the board will reconsider that requirement or something along that line.
I have no problems with that.
Yeah, I don't need it.
Unfortunately, that's a big, that's a big mitigation. No, I understand that, I understand that, and, I mean, something's gotta be done there.
Well, keep in mind, any lack of any one easement doesn't kill the majority of improvements down there. It might tweak one road, how wide it went, it might have to shift five feet, you know, it's, it's not gonna change the, substantially the whole improvement to the, to the bridge area.
Long as you have three.
Yeah.
Well, it all kind of depends, I mean, still...
But we might have to shift, we might have to shift one of the roads another five feet over, because we don't have that one easement, and we'll have to come in with a slightly modified plan, and what we anticipate right now.
We're also talking about environmental issues, too, so it's not simply, oh, well, we'll just do whatever we want, because there are other permit, permitting authorities that may not...
Well, all these conditions somewhere have to have, and I didn't, I don't remember if she has it, you know, it has to be an obtainable permit, you know, state, federal, local, and it's really, the bulk of it is really conservation issues, you know, I mean, realistically.
I mean, maybe, we're gonna meet next week with our attorney, maybe she can suggest what is best under that. All right. Again, improve old Rochdale Street between Rochdale Street and proposed subdivision, utilizing the existing stream culvert, including proposed sewer connection to Rochdale Street with old Ro- Rochdale Street, which this, I was kind of caught off guard with completely, because I assumed this was all part of the subdivision right up to Rochdale Street, old Rochdale Street.
Well, it's on the plans, but you own the property there, so it's very specific what all the improvements are, you know, road, where...
See, I don't think I've ever seen what that culvert looks like, I've never even gone down there, because I just figured, when we get into subdivision design...
That might be it, right there, the top picture on that stream crossing.
We're looking at it, it looks like the exact same thing.
That looks like it, it's a beautiful, it's built in 56.
I just, I've never seen it, so I guess I feel uncomfortable, because I always figured we'll address that when we deal with the subdivision design.
This is a preliminary subdivision approval.
Yeah, well, it's the...
And you're gonna have some, and they review the final design, and obviously, it's got a cut mustard, you know, that...
Right, I, I guess I was looking to update that statement to bring it up to subdivision standards, and...
I, I think the, there's a pavement width issue because of the size of the rightway there, isn't it?
Yes, it's a town road for the first 300, 400 feet, until you cross that stream, then it...
We're talking across from the dump entrance, going down.
That little dirt path, that's a town road.
Okay.
Old Rochdale used to go all the way down to Lester Street, just north of...
After the bridge, it cru- it cut...
Right, now, where do your parcels begin?
Right over the bridge.
Just after the culvert.
Okay, but I know the left side of that road, the current owner is...
Correct.
The current owner of one of your parcels.
Correct.
So I would think if you had to widen it, we could widen.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, so, the rightway wouldn't really be limiting you.
But the culvert does.
Which, that, I, I mean, that's all news to me, because I, I really, I was strictly thinking mitigation up to this point.
Correct.
And that was kind of part of the subdivision in my mind, I guess.
Well, it's a town road.
Yeah, I, I, I never...
Discontinued.
I don't think we ever talked about it, but you, what you say could very well be right, I guess I'm just wondering in my own mind, the best way to handle that culvert, if it is a problem, widthwise.
Why don't we, why don't we discuss it at another time?
All right, well, and think about how we want to word this, so that it isn't gonna limit us in the design of that road.
I've already settled on that.
Okay, all right. And then the gifting of Leicester Street land, 180-plus acres, because, and then somewhere in here, because the original scenario of the Leicester Street land was, it's 122 acres, is it 180 acres, the two Mass Electric parcels and the Wright property? Is that what it comes down to? I just wanted to make sure, that's what it came to.
Yeah.
Because somewhere, it sounded like it was just the Wright property, and I was wondering what happened to the...
No, no, they're both in it. There's three parcels total.
So, and, there's actually four parcels, according to your plan. You have two Mass Electric parcels, you have a Brendan Properties parcel down below, parcel C, and a parcel B, that's the Wright property.
Oh, that's, I mean, yeah, okay.
So it's actually made up of four parcels, which, if we tie down those four parcels, that should cover...
That's why we want to identify them.
That's, I guess that's...
That should be within an acre, an acreage.
Yeah, and then, because I, I had in the back of my mind, a total of, I think we went back and forth, like, 330 acres, there's 150 around the subdivision, all the little parcels added up.
Yes, there was...
I thought it was like 150 plus the 180, the town's gonna end up with like 330 acres.
Something like that, yes.
Okay, just so, uh...
It's on that green, you know that green sheet, which...
I, I have it, yeah.
Those totals still are intact.
The planner has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I, question, suggestion, point of discussion for the board, under the paragraph we're talking about, D, they're gifting the land on Lester Street to the town for open space use. The board may want to consider changing open space to municipal use, in the event that there is something viable and logical that can be used there, if it's for open space use, that severely restricts it, I'm not suggesting that we build a school, or a police station, or anything there, but if the board decided that there was an appropriate use that would go there, getting that out of open space use is actually an act of legislation.
Do we have the authority to do that? Under the site, well, under the subdivision?
Yeah, I think technically, that parcel you do, because they're still under 40, 40%.
They have 58 or so percent on...
On, because I remember Mr. Shannon brought it up, can the subdivision stand by itself with 40% open space? And they have 40% around the subdivision, plus they have this land.
That doesn't necessarily mean that we have the authority to do that, to so designate it, irrespective of...
Well, the town meeting would need to accept the gift of land, and the planning board would be the petitioning body to town, and they would...
We can ask...
We can ask, we can ask the attorney on that.
Attorney Brown also, right.
You know, just something that we need to consider.
I think it's a good thing, I mean, yeah, I have no problem with it, I mean, I'm not saying it...
Especially, what the town looking at...
We want to make sure that we don't have a 20 years from now.
Yes, but if the town's looking at alternative energy...
Of course they do. Ask questions, Mr. Chairman.
This is a possible site for location.
So that ultimately, there is, um...
Is it any of that farm land that we're taking out of?
I don't believe so, because it was a previous residence, unless he had it in, in 61 Forestry.
Who's this?
The, the, the 181 acres, 180 acres, Dan asked if any of it was 61 property, I don't believe that it was.
I don't think so.
I, I bought it at auction, and there was no...
Oh, then, yeah, if you bought it at auction, then that's not an issue.
So tie down parcels, or... Potentially. On Lester Street. Street. So you want, how much of 180?
Totally 180, plus or minus.
For municipal use.
Well, I, I guess it could, and again, it's...
It comes down to what the legal option is.
Yeah, it, it depends on what Pam says, and, and...
We're talking about the Wright property, right?
50, yes, well, Wright plus three other parcels, on that side.
I can't imagine the Wright property would be good for municipal use, considering grades involved.
I doubt it, but possibly up where the house is, if they want, ever wanted to.
But as a, as a site for a wind turbine, or wind turbines...
Or a camp?
Yeah, exactly, something, a recreation center, nature center, et cetera, which may be considered not necessarily open space use, but would be in keeping with the open space theme.
Was that evaluated as part of the wind farm?
It was not, but...
Actually, it's probably a good spot.
That's, you know, and that, I would hate for us to lose that opportunity by classifying it as open space.
That would be a great spot, you can see Boston from up there, you know, right up where that house was, that would probably be a great spot for a wind turbine.
All right, so that's that, I, I think we, I just wanted to confirm all the open space parcels, uh, town parcels.
Mm-hmm.
And then the reclaimed 2,500 feet, I guess that was my, to tie that into B, C, I guess, whatever it was. Yeah, B.
No, A.
Is it A?
Yes, it is.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Now, are you talking, making them a, the same provision?
I would almost tie them together.
Or, or just tying them together through language and E.
I would tie them together, yeah, whatever it's A or E, but I'd put them both together.
You want the, okay, so you want the...
Just so there's no, yeah, and then we have to put a timeframe on the patch, versus the pulverizing and...
Yeah, the draft decision also breaks this into the phasing part, so you could tie them in now, and then you're gonna break them apart.
Well, I, I think I wanted to kind of just agree on all the mitigation first, and then we can kind of think some more about, for next meeting, and Mr. Coyle will have a chance to weigh in by next meeting, as far as, uh, the phasing also.
Yeah.
Because we even have to, I don't think the board's physically, we've really talked about mitigation to make sure the project works, we all agree on mitigation and everything else, but I don't think we really physically got into the, the phasing of the project yet, so although we have your ideal situation, I guess the board has to decide if that's its ideal situation. Reclaim 850 feet of Rochdale Street pavement between east end of sewer to 200 feet north of Chaper Way, is that north, going towards the beach? I, I assume it must be, I'm not too good on that, north and south in that direction.
Could be considered northeast.
All right, but, yeah, that's fine. Install traffic signal at intersection of Rochdale Street at Oxford Street North, and I was just thinking as per approved plan, and, you know, we need a plan to tie it down, basically.
Before we leave those other two items.
Yeah.
Speaking of language, attempt.
What's that?
Everywhere in there's minor widening of pavement to attempt.
Right.
I don't like that word.
I think their reasoning for that is, there's a couple areas, one, there's a culvert going underneath Rochdale Street in one location, that it could be in that 850 feet, that could be tough.
Yeah, it's really the area where there's like banks on private property, you know, that just fall off.
Which, most of that, there is a mess of...
Most of it's up Rochdale.
Or possibly, I can think of maybe a tree, but, but the only other, there's a culvert that goes underneath Rochdale Street, that could be an issue in that spot.
And that's fine, but I think if we're going to attempting, just saying you're attempting it, you're not tying it to, oh, there are certain, there's certain things that might preclude it from happening, also, attempt makes it sound like we're really not gonna try very hard, to me, that's what it sounds like to me, we're gonna attempt to do it, but, you know, maybe we can't.
You can reword it such that, you know, unless there's environmental issues, or, or land ownership issues, we're prohibited.
Well, I think if, if there are items that we can tie to a plan, that we can say, these, in this particular area, there might be issues.
Well, remember at the definitive plan, you're gonna have that final plan?
Yeah.
You know, the final construction plan for this?
Right, but if we're gonna go to the definitive, we've already spent, I don't even know how much time we spent on this, I mean, the definitive process is, is almost a joke at this point, because we already designed pretty much everything.
No, you haven't done the subdivision, you're just talking about mitigation, and really in general strokes.
We've tied down a lot, so the definitive...
It's gonna be a very technical review, it's not going to be as...
Is not gonna be...
Not gonna be normal.
It's not gonna be as negotiation as, as what you've dealt with, but there are some highly technical aspects that still need to be, yeah.
It's gonna be more engineering issues, I'm saying, the process has been greatly aided by this.
Yeah, everything's gonna be tied up.
And therefore, it makes sense, because the purpose of the preliminary is to come up with as much definition and description as we can, so that when they go to the definitive, we don't spend three months talking about, well, I had this idea, or you had that idea, and we were both at the same meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, so rather than have misunderstandings six months from now, whenever we get to this, I'd rather see it cleaned up.
So to be clear, you'd like the, the language at the end of both of these items...
No, lose the word attempt.
Lose the word attempt, but with can accommodate the widening without interfering with private abutting properties or environmental areas, you'd like that beefed up a little bit?
Whatever, whatever we're talking about, the chairman obviously knows several issues over there, because he lives two feet from the building, so it would seem to me that as he's micromanaging the process now, he can help us micromanage this, so that the language fits what another board member might want.
I will do my best, Ed.
As opposed to what the chairman wants.
So you want actual specific instances in each of these, each of these items?
I know you'll do better than your best, to achieve this one goal in your life.
I think just we lose that attempt. I think just we lose that attempt.
Yeah, well, we'll tie that down with the attorney too. We'll do the same thing, but I figured at least...
But I think if we have some instances...
Actually, I'm happy Mr. Moss is here just to clarify things as we go down.
It makes, it takes some of the questions out of it.
Well, and I only ask because I'm going to forward these comments to Ms. Brown, so that she can have an idea of where we're at when she shows up next week.
Okay, well, that's what I said.
And you want specific instances included in there.
Yeah, I mean, if we're already, as I'm hearing, there are 15 things that have just been enumerated in the space of three minutes. It would seem to me that we could put that into this document and say, there are certain areas where there are properties, whether they be abutting, there be environmental issues, whatever the issues are, the board is saying, we know about this ahead of time.
Because the other place that it comes up in...
Well, actually, it states that in there, really.
Is in your concern between the landfill and Laddie's property, where the slopes are on each side of the road. They may have tough, a tough time getting a concrete in that area.
So, I mean...
The guardrail is right there at the back of the curve, you know, it goes right down.
If we can, if we can create an understanding beforehand, so that I know what we're looking for and they know what they're looking for.
I guess we'll bounce it off of her to figure out the best way to tie it down, that's all. All right, the, I guess we're to G. Install traffic signal and associated widening work for the intersection or to, you know, whatever, turn lanes and things and minor widenings and basically that. Associated...
Improvements.
Improvements for the intersection. Or necessary for the intersection. As per a plan approved by the planning board.
Should we limit that somehow on here? Because...
What do you mean?
Putting the signal in, the issue there is you can't come out of the side street because there's too much through traffic. So, once you stop the through traffic, we don't need a left turn pocket to go down that street if nobody turns left into that street.
No, but I don't think we really looked at, all we've said is, we need a light there. But we've never really looked at if, I would think between yourself, Bill Coyle, and if we need graves, but we probably don't even need graves if we have...
With appropriate design or whatever.
Exactly, that's all. I don't think we're looking, you know, you have the pond on one side, you have private property all the way around, so you can only do so much with this in a right way, but whatever we can do to get the best intersection we can, that's all.
Okay, fine.
And if you have alternate language?
No, that's fine.
I just to let you know that you're going to do minimal amount of work there and get level A, because the signal is going to be the solution. The side street sits there forever trying to come out today, and that's the issue. So, once the signal's there, they have green, you know, they don't have to wait anymore. So, improve without any turn lanes or changes other than get rid of the island.
All right. Next item was H., public sewer installation in Rochdale Street, 4,100 feet between Old Rochdale and High Street, temporary patch. And I assume that's tied together with J. Yeah, so H. and J. we're going to tie together. And then the next, I, again, I guess I didn't realize, is that a public road, High Street?
Yes.
Lloyd? I think it's private street, actually.
Right, but I mean, I, you know, I always envisioned calling your subdivision coming to Rochdale Street, but we're obviously going to want subdivision, you know, basically a subdivision road right to Rochdale Street, just so we're all on the same page.
Right, but we have wetlands issues there.
Yeah.
There's an existing roadway. What we were looking at is, you would ask for 28 feet of pavement width in the whole subdivision.
Yeah.
And that's not a problem.
Yeah.
But down here at this end of the other culvert crossing, we'd like to go with 22 feet. There's no houses, there's no houses along that stretch. There's nobody going to park for a party or anything until you're into the site, so...
I guess before I feel comfortable making that decision, we'd like to see your design and you, where the wetlands are and all of that stuff.
We've got a stream on one side.
I honestly don't feel comfortable.
We've got a snake, I mean, we can go 26 or 8 feet and then neck down to the narrow point where the stream is and the pond is, but otherwise, we're going to be filled pond or stream just to do that.
The stream never gets really big.
Coming out of the pond. No, I know, but the point is, Khan Khan looks at it and says, what is the benefit of widening for that first 300 feet? There's no houses, there's nobody going to park there for a...
You've got a lot of traffic flow going through there.
Well, how about this, you know, right now Rochdale's 22, and it obviously handles everyone up there. So, this road is only handling those people in the subdivision, which is probably a tenth of the traffic. So, 22 obviously works, but as a, I don't, I even microanalyze it like Lloyd perhaps has.
They'll say I don't like his analyzations so far.
No, but I'm saying, maybe there's a possibility of getting 24, 24 in there without, you know, filling in ponds and...
I don't think I'm willing to commit to that. I'd rather say subdivision road till now and if we...
We're not here to decide.
No, we want to have it so that if we want to keep the 28-foot road there, we can't...
We also don't want to shoot in more between the people who meet tomorrow night and not going to be too happy with you trying to put 70 feet of roadway that you don't need in their pond either.
Yeah, and actually, this decision right here, or this item just says, you know, improve the street, it didn't pin us down on the width.
Well, that's why I'm saying I want it to subdivision standards. That and the other High Street, both of them, because right along, I always assumed the subdivision starts at Rochdale Street and goes out basically.
They're both going to be to subdivision standards, but I don't think the right away is probably not wide enough.
I'm saying the general subdivision, your subdivision standards.
The only two things are right away width, this is not there.
You want 28 feet?
Yeah.
And then road width.
Under major roads and subdivision standards, I think it's supposed to be 40 and 50.
28 feet is ridiculous anyways.
Well, only unnecessary.
This is an existing roadway that we're improving.
Oh, you can't, it's a driveway.
Well, we're not having a debate.
I understand, but it's a glorified driveway. There's one house on it?
I think the board needs to look at both in detail of all the ramifications of various widths.
Which I understand, we'll certainly look at the design of this, I'm just talking to tie it down for now.
Let Bill take a look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next thing is drainage structure and discharge point improvements along Rochdale Street between Old Rochdale Street and High Street. Is that what we're talking about?
Drainage engineering drainage recommendations?
Yep. All right, so do we have a plan on that? Was there ever a plan developed?
Yeah, the sewer plan, that showed the profile all the way from High to Old Rochdale.
Yeah.
Included, there's probably 20 catch basins going in, we're using existing discharge points, and we're going to improve the discharge points.
All right, so I'm going to say as per approved plan.
Yeah, it was a drainage slash sewer plan.
By the Auburn Planning Board. But it's going to be a new plan, because it's going to have, it's going to be a finished plan for this, because you're going to have the final sewer drawings on it, and when you do the final sewer, you can kind of tie everything in for a nice...
Lloyd and I met this morning, he has all those final plans done.
Okay.
Sewer, drainage, everything done for that.
On J., you have another attempt to get rid of there, too.
Oh, okay.
So, as per plan approved by the planning board. All right, then reclaim 950 feet of Rochdale Street pavement between High Street and north limit of Rochdale Street.
This is to improve the width.
This is, yes, to improve the road in the width.
Can we put that in there?
Yeah. Can we put that on your sewer plan? Just extend that plan up to West Street, so it's all technically tied down on a plan?
I don't have a total yet.
Okay.
So, I don't think, I mean, this mitigation design and everything, you know, that's like phase four, phase five, you know?
According to you guys.
Well, it's a sequence that has to, I mean, we need sewer, do you need to...
Right, no, I understand that. I don't think that's going to be as big of an issue.
You're looking for just to be shown on a plan.
Yes, that's all.
Yeah.
That's all.
And why wouldn't we have that?
We just got to extend the plan.
No, no, but we don't have to, we don't have to show it on a sewer plan, we can have a separate sheet.
If you'd rather do that, I'd like to have that and West Street shown on the plan.
And then one down by the beach, you know, on a separate sheet.
Yes, yeah, yes, that'd be great.
It doesn't have to be a sewer plan.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay. On M., where do you stand with the other subdivision?
What's that?
Do you want M.?
Uh, I'm on L. Just finishing, to improve road width and as shown on the plan, approved plan, as shown. And approved by the planning board. All right, and then West Street, Rochdale Street, northwest corner roundings and things, which we discussed. I don't think, I know you drew up some schematics, which we still have never got that radius resolved, but whether we do it without the radius or with the radius, you know...
Yeah, if we're going to do something without the ra, you know, the problem is, no one's really been able to communicate with it.
Right, no, I understand.
I'll make an attempt this week.
Oh, if you could, I mean, it seems like a nice guy, it's just...
No, I understand.
Just running out of the hospital.
Yeah, I mean, you feel like you're intruding on the guy's private life here, talking to him about it.
Yeah.
I'll go to his son's hospital if I don't get him directly.
All right, and again, on a plan. As shown. On a plan. All right, and then realignment and improved radius of Lester Street curve at Auburn Hills property frontage, land gift to the town for road corner purposes as per approved plan. Realignment of the other Lester Street curve, 600 feet curve at Shannon property frontage corner, land to be gifted from Shannon to the town prior to implementation as per approved plan pulverized. The other thing that wasn't here was pulverize and pave Lester Street from the bridge to the town line, which we had talked about.
We never talked about it.
Yes.
From the bridge?
Yes.
No.
Yes, we have.
No, we talked about it.
Remember? Because when I, when I was looking at the park, up the dump, he said, we just went for the Lester Street, because we had agreed on that section.
No, no, no.
Well, anyways, we need to come up with language.
You remember, remember, we did the study in a peak hour, what, there were four cars going up Lester Street in a peak hour?
No, we specifically talked about it. Because rubbish trucks are going through, there's all kinds of traffic going through.
To do Shannon's Corner.
Yes, right.
To help you out on that.
Yes.
And then we, you know, you remember, then we talked about the Oxford Street lights, and then we talked, you know, then we talked about putting gravity sewer for 4,000 feet.
And that cheapened up the whole project in the end.
Well, no, really.
Because in the end, you did away with five pump stations, right?
No, 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 no.
There's no pump stations, right?
Mr. Shannon, I thought we were supposed to go over this as a board.
Yeah.
Not have a negotiation.
Right.
Our decision is our decision. We're getting into this habit that the applicant actually thinks that they get to decide what's in our decisions. They don't get to decide what's in our decision. We make a decision, they can either accept our decision or not. It's not a negotiation as to what we as a board choose to put in our decisions.
I understand. We're still trying to make everything work together, but I understand that, but, all right. Other than that, the cost and expense permitting development, including mitigation package shall be the responsibility of the applicant. What agrees to consider applicants volunteering mitigation package and deliberation rendering its decision on the open space, I don't think there's a problem there. The applicant hereby waives any and all claims, none of the future condition of local plates for Auburn Hills related to the volunteered mitigation. Is everybody all set with that stuff? All right, well, why don't, why don't we talk about this again, you know, with the attorney next week? And we try to put amongst ourselves, and I'll try to go through it with Mr. Coyle, to try to put the timeframe and phasing, see if we're in agreement with the applicant on the phasing part of it, and if we think there needs to be changes on any of that. But at least we made a first pass, because we need to tie this down.
Yes, yeah.
It's been a long time, and, I mean, it's more my fault than anybody's, I take complete blame. It's just now that winter's here, I have time to put forward with it and hopefully other more important...
Go with Bill, and she'll be here for the next meeting.
She will.
All right, will the board actually be able to comment? The entire board, or just email next week?
Oh.
Because last time I checked, we elect five members of the planning board, Mr. Shannon.
Yes, absolutely. Is someone denying that, Dave?
Uh, well, some people act like there's only one member.
Oh.
I'd be happy to take your comments and pass them on to her.
All right.
Not the point, Mr. Bernie, not the point at all.
We have a certain time?
Well, Lowe's is going to take another three hours, so be careful.
Yeah, I think that...
Mine seemed to be going well at the end.
Oh, they're good guys. They're good guys. I think I do have you penciled in, but for the life of me, I can't think of it off the top of my head, so I'll shoot, I'll shoot Lloyd an email tomorrow.
I'm assuming you're going to be an hour and a half or something with that.
Probably, at least.
Something similar to that tonight.
Yeah.
Are you an optimist?
You have to set certain goals in life.
That's it, that's it.
Attainable goals are usually...
All right.
There's not a doubt.
I think we're extended to the end of January, so...
Okay.
You are currently.
I just kindly request that maybe we could wrap this up this month.
We're going to very much try.
Prior to our adjournment, or your adjournment, I had one other suggestion that I know that Mr. Moss and and Mr. Bristol are close to completing their definitive submission, and I think that the board is mostly agreed that it's a matter of if, not, or when, not if, and I would suggest that the board allow them to file their definitive submission.
Depending on a couple of minor issues, but...
But allow them to file their definitive submission to allow for the process to begin and not to hold a hearing until the special permit has been completed and filed. And that way, that will...
Or sparing them from filing such a decision if they could do that immediately.
Well, I guess...
Other than our consideration for us.
Technically, the lot sizes and things don't mean it without the special permit.
Yeah, without the special permit, they can't file a definitive as an open space subdivision. And my suggestion would be as an act of good faith on the board's part that you allow it. Ultimately, it's the board's decision, but I think that they've been good applicants to this point and...
Just FYI, we're not really ready to file till I think you said the end of the month?
Well, it's, I'd rather have this out of the way, and I would think if we're having three or four meetings this month, I would think there's a good chance we could have this put to bed by the end of the month. But I, so if that's, I mean, if everybody feels similar, I would much rather have this out of the way, just so officially you have your permit, we're reviewing your definitive plan.
Well, I thank Adam for bringing this up, but why don't we see how we're standing on the 25th of January?
And that's fair enough, I just, I'm trying to move the process along, trying to pressure.
You know, I mean, then we're just waiting for you to be ready to sign.
All right.
Just one clarification against that decision as well, that she gave at draft of.
Yes.
And just for your own information, Dave, on the next, the last page, item four, she clearly states that, from B, C, D, and E, shall be gifted to the town robber.
Okay.
Those guys were on our plan.
All right, I just want to, I didn't feel comfortable going through that they were all tied down, and I just want to tie them down and I didn't know whether you guys were having second thoughts about the mass electric parcels or not, or, but it's all there.
We have three extra parcels in Lester, if anybody wants, we can have them.
Okay, all right.
If you guys want to take them, it's fine.
All right. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. All those tables, I, all those policies are the books.